Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock. I had to call this meeting of the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners to order. And to get us started today, we have Pastor Mark with us to lead prayer. Welcome.
God says to us in Psalm forty-six, verse ten, "Be still and know that I am God. I will be exalted among the nations; I will be exalted in the earth." So let us bow before him this morning. Our great Father in heaven, you are the only true God of all the nations. And we just celebrated our two-hundred-and-forty-eighth year of our nation. This nation exists only because you have ordained it. So this morning, we exalt your name above all others. May the work of these commissioners of the Ottawa County be honoring to you. We thank you for each of them and their services to us, the citizens of Ottawa County. We ask for your blessing upon them. May you lead them by your Holy Spirit. May your will be done in our small part of this great nation under your sovereign rule. We pray this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen. God bless.
Thank you. If you would please rise for the pledge.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Ms. Cosby.
Here.
Mr. Clainions.
Here.
Mr. Zylestrup.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mrs. Wenzel. Mrs. Curran.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Here.
Mr. Belknap.
Present.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
And Mrs. Meadham.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have quorum.
All right, great. Well, seeing as we have no correspondence scheduled for today, we're going to move straight to public comment. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the board. If you would like to, please come forward and state your name and jurisdiction. You'll have three minutes. Mr. Clerk, do we have a list?
There are actually no registered public comments this morning.
Okay, well, if anyone would like to speak to the board, please begin now. Welcome.
Good morning. Donna Mooney Georgetown Township. I'm reading a letter from a sheriff's deputy anonymously. So I'm going to try to get through this as quick as I can to the voting public of Ottawa County. I'm a sheriff's deputy with the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office with a number of years of service to this great county. I'm writing this in reference to the upcoming sheriff election. It is not only my voice, but the voice of the majority of the agency members. All three Ottawa law enforcement unions endorsed John Anderson to be our next sheriff. The unions held a forum where we could listen and ask questions of both candidates prior to this vote. John Anderson won in a landslide victory over undersheriff DeBoer. Let me explain the importance of this. Roughly seventy-five to eighty percent of the employees in the union voted against Eric DeBoer. Friends and coworkers voted against someone they have known a long time. They didn't do it because of hate. No one will ever say Eric is not a nice guy. The majority of the department knows he is not the man to make the changes that we desperately need to keep moving forward to serve the great county of Ottawa. When it comes to endorsements, the biggest endorsement any candidate can receive in this election is from the three unions that make up the sheriff's office. John Anderson has received those endorsements, and the majority of the agency members had the courage to support this. We know the issues we face as an agency. We know undersheriff DeBoer is not the solution to fix our problems, but a continuation of the toxic work environment we currently have. As Ottawa deputies, our voice is silenced. We do not have the right to free speech against our agency. We can't publicly tell everyone our frustrations without fear of retaliation from administration. This endorsement is the way for us to speak our voice and become the leading agency in West Michigan once again. There used to be pride in wearing the Ottawa patch on your shoulder. We used to get the top recruits and have a line of people wanting to work here. Now we lose good employees to Kent County Grand Rapids and many other agencies. Our recruitment application process leaves us with very few good applicants. These things never happened in the past, and it is a direct result of bad leadership and the wrong people being promoted. Undersheriff DeBoer received endorsements from Sheriff Polan, Muskegon County, and Sheriff Young, Kent County, and a few others that look good on paper. But none of these endorsements come from people who know the struggles of what we face internally at our agency. Our administration has been told many times about issues and complaints, but they continue to tell everyone the agency is going great. These endorsements were likely due to Sheriff Kempker's relationship with them versus their personal knowledge of Eric DeBoer's knowledge or ability to be sheriff. Morale at the sheriff's office has been at an all-time low due to lack of communication, changes in policies that let criminals get away, lack of moving forward and progressing with equipment, along with multiple other problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Place for campaigning, you know that.
Commissioner Bergman, Commissioner Bergman, please do not interrupt public comment.
Well, if you want, I will.
If.
As chair, you should stop him.
Sir, if you would like to interrupt public comment, then we will have to take a recess.
Public comment.
Motion for a five-minute recess.
Second.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have recessed for five minutes. Thank you.
Write the first speech.
Also, prerogative of chairman, ask for business to be done.
All right. Okay. We could just turn and there's a page hanging on the wall. Resolution passed by this board, and I'm going to read three paragraphs. Whereas the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners swore an oath to uphold the constitutions of the United States and the state of Michigan, which protect the natural God-given rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The constitutions guarantee freedom of religion, speech, and assembly, the right to bear arms, due process of law, as well as provide other protections. And whereas the First Amendment to the United States Constitution, as part of the Bill of Rights, instructs that Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or of the right to the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. Therefore, be it resolved, but the board declares Ottawa County, Michigan, to be a constitutional county and resolves to protect the individual freedoms of the people of Ottawa County as outlined in the constitutions of the United States and the state of Michigan to include freedom of speech, religion, and assembly, the right to keep and bear arms, and the right to due process. It's a great reminder. That's why it's on the wall. Prior boards may have attempted to silence citizens as they came to speak. They may have tried to close the building, prevent people from coming into the building. This board will not do that. And so we welcome all people who would like to come and give a three-minute public comment. That is according to our, not just the constitution, but according to our board rules, which we will continue to follow. And I would like to make sure that no one believes that their speech is being silenced or prohibited. It is not. We welcome everyone to come and give three minutes if they would like. There's also two opportunities, one in the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. So if we could please continue with public comment, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kelsey Studabaker, Jamestown Township, and I would like to finish reading this letter from the sheriff or for the deputies. Morale at the sheriff's office has been at an all-time low due to lack of communication, changes in policies that let criminals get away, lack of moving forward and progressing with equipment, along with multiple other problems. Robinson Brain Health did a study and found that our agency comes in second overall for the most unhappy agency out of the many they tested. This was after employees took a survey and they compiled results. The union did a survey where a large amount of deputies answered. And they were thinking about leaving the sheriff's office. This survey was provided to our administration, and nothing changed. Deputies voiced their concerns and are honest about applying to other agencies. Our administration does nothing to see what they can do to change. When it comes down to it, you will see a very small amount of Ottawa County employees supporting undersheriff DeBoer with a letter they are copying and pasting to their Facebook pages, which is fine. They are supporting a friend, but don't let the misinformation fool you. The very large majority of the sheriff's office voted in favor of John Anderson. Eric has been undersheriff for some time now, and still nothing has changed. The only time he has been out is when public events are going on and the area deputy is requested to take photos of him interacting with the public for the Facebook page to help his campaign. He has not engaged with his employees to ask what can be done to help this agency. All we keep hearing is, "I am not a cop anymore, I'm a politician." We need a cop to lead us. We need the community's support to save the agency. His own pamphlet handed out in the mail is stating he is the only candidate endorsed by West Michigan law enforcement, a clear lie and proof that he is overlooking his own employees. We are law enforcement, the bread and butter of the agency, and we endorsed Anderson. We need an outside influence to change the issues at the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office that are being overlooked. We need John Anderson. John's resume is outstanding with amazing leadership history. I thank you for your time in reading this. Many off-duty deputies are knocking on doors, spreading the word in support for John Anderson. Please take the time to listen to what they have to say. Please share this information. It is important we change the toxic culture of the agency before all the good members leave. We are extremely, are already extremely understaffed. Please show up to vote August sixth. The August sixth primary election will determine who is on the ticket to be sheriff in November. Please spread the word to all Ottawa citizens. Let them know your sheriff's deputies need everyone's support to vote for John Anderson. Thank you, from a concerned deputy and the voice of the majority of the agency.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Good morning. Good morning. Marla Walters, Holland Township, District Four. Freedom is what allows each of us to believe the way we wish. The danger is when we think that our values or our ideas of personal freedom are the only ones that should count in the public square. And it becomes even more dangerous when elected officials use their position to implement divisive policies, writing resolutions meant to ostracize some, cutting funding to vital programs when funds are available, and causing public servants to lose their livelihood are an abuse of power and an assault on those individual freedoms you mentioned. It's easy to talk about freedom and family in broad terms. I don't know anyone who doesn't believe in freedom and who doesn't support families. But the question we must ask ourselves in the public square, are all types of families supported? And does freedom consider the rights and the needs of everyone in our community? Because it's not really freedom unless every person is valued, every voice is heard, and everyone belongs. Then and only then can freedom ring. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Good morning. Joel Studabaker, Jamestown Township. I want to call our attention to our elections. Our elections require trust, and trust is earned. And when you look at the elections of 2020 and 2022, there are a lot of things that we can point to. But I want to specifically speak to the process that we have here in Michigan with open primaries and how it is complete and utter garbage. Our open primaries allow anybody to vote for anything. And the fact of the matter is that political parties are actually private nonprofits. And they have the right to select who represents them properly as candidates, as workers, and as leaders within the party. So that being said, I want to read a resolution that was passed unanimously at the last Republican Party Executive Committee meeting. It is a resolution to denounce and condemn conservative Ottawa PAC and its endorsed candidates, donors, and affiliates. Whereas the entity referring to itself as, quote, Ottawa Conservative PAC, formed in May of 2023, is running candidates for the county positions as Republicans who are soliciting Democrat help in order to defeat Republican competition in the August 2024 primary. And whereas Roger Bergman, speaking at a fundraiser of the so-called Conservative Ottawa PAC, stated, and we need to recognize as Republicans that in this coming election, that in order to win, we shouldn't be bashing the Democrats because we are going to need them whether we like it or not. And in many respects, the Democrats want us to win because they don't want what we've got right now. And in many got right now, and in many situations, they're willing to help us, so don't forget that." And whereas, Democrats are the other major party whose tenets are in stark contrast and direct opposition to the tenets of the Republican Party. For example, the Democrat Party is for unlimited abortion, bigger government, including spending and debt, and is against freedom of speech, religious freedom, the right to keep and bear arms as defined by the Second Amendment, and much more. And whereas, Conservative Ottawa PAC, candidates, donors, and affiliates are currently working with multiple nonpartisan groups, supposedly, who are also actively working against our Conservative Republican candidates. And whereas, any organization or group working against the strongest, most Conservative Republican candidates is working to weaken the party in Ottawa, which ultimately hurts the citizens of Ottawa County. So therefore be it resolved, the Ottawa County Republican Party Executive Committee denounces and condemns Conservative Ottawa PAC as opposition to the Republican Party in Ottawa County, Michigan, and demands that all endorsed candidates, members, and affiliates immediately cease to run for office as Republicans, including but not limited to the following list of names: Eric DeBoer, Sarah Matoysik, Cheryl Clark, Jim Berry, Jordan Joritzma, Jacob Bonema, Mark Northrup, Sean Half, John Teeples, Phil Kyers, Josh Bruger, and Richard Van Daop. And be it resolved, the Ottawa Republican Party delegates have endorsed courageous candidates for the August 6th primary who will actively support the Republican Party platform, and we encourage citizens to go to ottawagop.org and see those candidates.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
My name's Dave Barnoski, and I vote in Port Sheldon Township. First of all, I agree with Roger Bergman. This is an inappropriate forum for people to do their politicking, but since you started, I'm going to continue it. When the government, it's very hypocritical for you to point out your, "I support the First Amendment" and all that, and point to your little thing on the back wall, and all that separation of church and state, considering all the things that you've done. But, let me quote something on here. "When the government creates a limited public forum, it can impose viewpoint-neutral content restrictions, so long as they are reasonable in light of the forum's purpose. For public comment periods, such restrictions might include limiting speakers to the subject at hand, or the amount of time they have to speak." You should be doing that. Second, as far as Mr., whatever his name is, and his, your county resolution, your county party resolutions, it's my opinion that the Ottawa County Republican Party has been completely taken over by the people who animate Ottawa Impact. Yeah, go ahead and laugh. You're the same people, you may not have the same name. So, your endorsement convention is virtually, you know, it's antithetical to the idea of political parties, to tell your voters who to vote for before the primaries. So, the list of people he just advocated that people vote against is, it's exactly who you should be voting for. You seem to think that the 186 people who voted for that should be telling everybody else who to vote for. I did a little study, I think, what do you have, 321 total delegates? That's how many people you have deciding for your, you had 186 people show up? That's how many people should decide for Ottawa County? I don't think so. It's, you think you can take over a small group and then tell the whole county what to do? And because the rest of the people who think they're Republicans should file suit, but you've gone so far beyond what Republicans have been in the past, they didn't know. We're making sure they know now. You're not going to fool them again.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
A little bit shorter. My name is Virginia Greenlee, and I'm from Park Township. I want to thank the board for continuing to be constitutionalists, for continuing to stand for freedom, for faith, for families. As some of you have heard me before, I have two vaccine-injured kids, diabetes type 1, not genetically inherited. There's a lot of garbage out there in terms of the promotion of vaccines still, including Pfizer still saying, with emergency use authorization, kids beginning at the age of six months can be vaccinated with the COVID vax, when out of all of history, there's never been a vaccine as detrimental as the COVID vax, having all of its side effects, side effects and injuries be affecting all sizes and ages of population. Dr. McCullough, just recently, and people know that name, has said that the mRNA and the Pfizer genetic code is taken up into the human genome within an hour. Obviously, we know it didn't just stay in the arm, and it is changing the human genome forever. We already know of lots of cases that people have died from the COVID vax, but in general, the Western medical model does not associate the deaths of people with the COVID vax. I have a friend who goes to a church who really encouraged all their elderly to get the COVID vax, and one by one by one, there are so many in that church without naming it, that have died that were elderly, and my friend keeps going to one funeral, and another funeral, and another funeral. I couldn't believe it, but that church was one of the ones that was so afraid of the COVID mania, that wouldn't even allow their people to sing during worship even with a mask on. That's absurd. So, it is still experimental, it is still hazardous, it's still most harmful, and there are lawsuits against it. Recently, we just had another death of a close friend who had been dealing with a health condition that had been stable, but he was talked into the COVID vax, talked into the boosters. He died the day that Allison's mother's funeral took place. He didn't have to die. He was my age. He didn't have to die. He still had a lot of life. But they found metastasis of different cancers that had developed in his body in different places, and it didn't come by accident.
Thank you.
And we're still being encouraged, we're still being encouraged, vaccinate your kids.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Ian Zimmer, Port Sheldon Township, Chairman Moss and members of the board. If accusations of implicating the ongoing business relationship of the MSU Extension and Ottawa County are to be contingent upon District 2 Commissioners' employment with MSU Extension, then Ottawa Impact has come full circle and has become the government overreach. Allegations of coercion being used for the benefit of political outcome, comments and innuendo that conspire to leverage actions in a manipulative manner. If Commissioners Moss and Meadama have concerns of conflict of interest, they may need to reflect on Libertas Classical Association Case Number 120 CV 997, and the confluence of board actions toward the Health Department in general, and Adeline Hamley specifically. You lost your case, you lost your appeal, you ran for office with a proverbial ax to grind. You tried to populate the Health Department with a puppet. When that failed, you orchestrated a kangaroo court termination hearing. That backfired with the $4 million, deal or no deal. Gibbs is gone, and Addie remains. Ottawa Impact is like a bull in a glassware shop, creating a debris field regardless which direction or lane chosen. Like the bull, the only way to stop Ottawa Impact is to corral it and head it out the door.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Bob Spahman, London Township. On the Chris Kleynan's issue, where Meadama and you went behind his back to threaten the MSU Extension Service by withholding shut up. The whole, the funds, and the loss of office space if they did not fire him. In my opinion, it was despicable to divide, deprive a man from his living, but also what I call blackmail, which is a crime in my book with possible jail time consequences for Meadama and Moss, as they were the ones that delivered the threat. You are not above the law. You do owe Chris at least an apology. Oh, wait a minute, I forgot that you owe Chris nothing, according to Ms. Rhoda. Your attorneys, Joe, at the Calhanger, who must have given you bad advice once again to do this, assuming they talked to you first. Chris has now found out how Ottawa Impact operates. I don't usually tell people to sue in this case, but I agree with what Chris is doing. He should also pursue blackmailing issue with malfeasance on the part of your, on your part of you with the Ottawa County Prosecutor's Office, and Lee Fisher. I was going to say something to Mr. Anderson, but I'll leave that for later. I just want to say, I still hope that Democrats would vote in the Republican in primary to oust OI. I have no problem with that. And also, the latest hire about Cameron Bricker. Apparently, he does not meet the qualifications of the job, he's far from it, from what I see, and it's just another one of your political appointees with his daddy giving you money. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Good morning, Sarah Kleynans, District 2. Been spending a lot of time thinking about what we're doing right now. We're sitting in a room, as we have thousands of hours in our lives, listening to people in our community, whether it's circle time in kindergarten, or classrooms and desks, there's locker rooms, benches, there's pews in churches. So many opportunities to gain wisdom and insight from people right here among us. And yet, when you chose once again to be weighed and to be measured, you were found wildly wanting. When you were faced with an actual functioning set of principles, and a moral compass that finds north. There are two fires currently going in our communities. The first is a laser-focused, controlled burn. That is the Ottawa County Democratic Party. At every level, we have 20- and 30-year-olds collecting firewood. We have teenagers that can't cast a ballot, but they'll collect kindling. The other fire, we'll need you to deal with come November. Whatever's left of the ashes, the smoldering embers of all of this, we're going to need you to put that in the dumpster you started this in, and then whoever's helping you pay for this, get them to help you drag that to the tire fire that is your state party. I have five more words, and then I'm going to spend the rest of the time watching you try to comprehend what everyone else already knows. You picked the wrong county.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good morning, it's Kirk Meplink from Zeon Township. I just wanted to come before you, let the people of Ottawa County know what's going on in their county. Things are rough, and most don't know it or even seem to care. But I wanted to go on the record as saying, so that people could know, and they could be warned, that we have the National Democratic Party paying people, paid actors, to stir up division in our county. These are the facts, there was an election recall, the first Hispanic woman unseated by a white male who stated in a quote, "I have better genetics. I'm old, I'm white, my family has been here since 18-something." I don't remember the exact date, but it was in the 1800s. "I'm a veteran, thank you for your service, sir. I check off so many boxes. Those that like diversity, equity, and inclusion should be screaming about that statement, but yet they defend it. It makes zero sense, I'm not a schooled person, but I'm just asking you, Ottawa County, look into that and think about why that is. Some political leaders fight for majority rule rather than having a desire to serve the people of this nation and this county. This county was a shining star in the conservative movement in this country for decades. I was told that over 40 years ago by my father, who said that this county was absolutely the shining star in a huge, great country that we live in. That's why businesses wanted to come here, that's why people wanted to live here. It's a great thing, but with good things come great responsibility. And some here couldn't see that. They went about their way in their life, thinking that the elected officials they elected to serve them were going to do a good job and take care of their county that they loved so much. We found out in 2022, and the people made it clear, that they weren't happy with how it was. There was a change. I want Ottawa County people to know that at, what goes on in the national level, and there's a lot of conservatives in this county that can believe and they can buy into what's going on in the national level, it's going on in your county. You have a chance in August and in November where the Democrats are actively going to vote in your primary, and they're going to actively vote for people who think they are Democrats, or think they're Republicans, they say they are, but they are not. Ottawa County residents, you need to wake up, because the craziness is just starting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, there is a second opportunity for public comment. We will move on to the approval of the agenda. I have a motion, please.
Still moved, second.
We have a motion and support. All in favor of approving today's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carried. Okay, we have today, public hearings. The first one is a public hearing for Prospect Flats. The suggested motion is to open a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed Brownfield Plan Amendment for the Prospect Flats redevelopment project.
Still moved, support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion, all in favor of approving that motion to open the public hearing, please Any discussion, all in favor of approving that motion to open the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carried. Okay, are there any, uh, public comments on the Brownfield Plan Amendment? All right. Excellent, seeing none, then I will, uh, motion to close the public hearing on the proposed Brownfield Plan Amendment for the Prospect Flats redevelopment project.
So moved. Second.
Motion and support, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, uh, that motion carried. All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, we have a second opportunity, uh, for public comment on, uh, another public hearing. Um, this one, the suggested motion is to open the public hearing and receive comments on the proposed Brownfield Plan Amendment for the Windsor Place Redevelopment Project.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and support, thank you. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, and that motion carried. Uh, so this is now the public hearing for Windsor Place. Uh, is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment? All right. Uh, if not, the suggested motion is to close the public hearing on the proposed Brownfield Plan Amendment for the Windsor Redevelopment Project.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Uh, all in favor of closing that public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Uh, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on, uh, uh, eight consent resolutions. Uh, could I please get a motion to approve the consent resolutions?
So moved.
Motion and support, any discussion, Commissioner Zalstra?
If I could remove, um, item O, please.
Item O, all right, we'll remove item O and move that to, uh, nine D. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, please go to the clerk for a vote on the consent resolutions, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Belnap.
Yes.
Mrs. Curran.
Yes.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Bonama.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Wenzel.
Yes.
Mrs. Mitoma.
Yes.
Mr. Kleynans.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
And Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, excellent. Uh, that brings us to our agenda and action requests, so nine A. Uh, this is the operating budget policy. The suggested motion is to approve the revised operating budget policy and advance it to a second reading before the Board of Commissioners.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and support, any discussion, Commissioner Zalstra?
Yeah, uh, great, thank you very much, appreciate that. Section, um, four A three. Kind of constantly kind of explain what that red line addition is supposed to mean. Where it says, and the amount of the contingency will take into consideration all areas of the county budget that is supported by the general fund. That was added, just going to clarify what that exactly is supposed to mean.
We do have Karen with us today.
Maybe Karen can help, thank you, Karen.
Yeah, welcome, Karen.
Good morning. Um, that was added, um, because without the reserves remaining in the funds, so the public health fund, sorry. The, without the, I think we talked about it when we talked about pulling the reserves back out of the funds, the childcare fund and the public health fund or any other fund like this. Um, the general fund contingency would be, um, we would take those items into consideration. So in case there's an emergency or something, the general fund contingency would have to be used to support those operations.
Right, no, I get that and, and that kind of what is said in the previous, um, part of that sentence where it says the amount of the contingency will not exceed 3% of the general fund's actual expenditure somewhere. So basically, 3% of general fund expenditures, right? Which is what roughly 3 point something million, right?
General fund expenditures is much greater than 3 million.
No, 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 this ain't 3% of, well, I don't know the exact numbers, 100 something, right?
Correct, yes.
So it'll be 3% of that, so our, based, the first part of the sentence seems to say we could have up to 3 point, what was the last number, 100 and?
I don't, yeah.
110, right?
Sure.
So 3% of that would mean, you know, we could have 3% of 110 million.
Correct.
The second part of the sentence seems to, uh, say that all areas of the county budget, uh, it says that is supported, I think that means that are supported, um, by the general fund. Would that include all of the expenditures of the county, the 260 million then?
Well, that would mean, uh, general fund transfers. So the areas that the general fund already supporting. So the general fund transfers, so there are a number of transfers out that if you look at part of the general fund budget, there's a number of transfers out, transfers to public health, transfers to childcare, transfers to, uh, friend of the court, transfers to a number of funds that exist in the general fund budget in that, um, 110 million dollar number. There are a number of transfers out that the general fund is supporting already.
Okay, so we're not talking about two different numbers in that sentence. It's not like.
No.
I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand why we have that second part of the sentence if basically the first part says you can have up to 3% of all general fund expenditures. And now you're saying there's an additional number that may be including transfers as well. So it may be exceed, let's just put 110 for that first number. Would that second number then be bigger than the 110? It would seem that way, right?
We were just trying to make the point that we wanted to set it with that in mind that those, um, those reserves would not be held in the individual funds. So we were trying to, um, um, make it, uh, make it more aware that we would set the general fund contingency amount. The general fund contingency amount is not automatically 3%.
No, I understand, it's up to 3%.
Up to, so.
I mean, last year it was 900 ish and, or then we put, put 1.1, 1.2. And this says basically if we use the 110 as the base, 3 point something, right? That's what it's saying. I'm just wondering if that second part is actually saying anything different than the first part.
It was, it was just to reiterate or to make more, um, clear that we would take into other funds. I think in the past it was more or less only, hmm, I wouldn't say it was only used for the general fund, but it was not ever clear that, it wasn't clear what funds it would consider. So now it's just making it more clear that it would consider general fund and other funds.
Okay, and so that could be bigger than the 110 number, you know, suppose that's the 110 number, whatever that is. Um, it could actually be higher.
I don't think in, I don't think in setting the amount it would be greater. I think in the amount in, in which, the funds in which it would support would be greater, not necessarily the 3 million amount.
Okay.
So I think it is saying two different things. I think the 3 million amount is good.
Okay.
But I think in the funds that it would support would be, hmm, I think it would have always supported any funds it needed to support. I think it has supported funds outside of the general fund in the past. It's just making it very clear that it will, but I think the amount, um, it's just making it very clear that it will support funds outside the general fund.
Okay, so it could be, assuming 110 is the number, it could be up to 4 or 5 million dollars based on, you know, this.
Well, the 3% of the 110 would still stay the same.
Right.
So that first sentence is still
Okay.
The same, and then making it very clear that it would support funds outside of the general fund, support operation.
My concern is that we would have a contingency fund that ends up being not simply 3 million, but 4 or 5 million. Uh, we've never had that to my, to my knowledge. Um, last year's contingency was 1.1.2, which, you know, I, I think that was even a little bit high and I definitely, you know, would not like it to see a contingency fund getting up to those levels, right? So.
So thank you, Commissioners Alstra, thank you, Karen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just reiterate that the limit is 3% of
I understand that.
General funds.
Right.
Actual expenditures and this clarification does not increase that number like you seem to have.
No, I, I don't, I can say one clarification, if that second part is indeed
Yes.
allowing us to increase that number even further, which I wouldn't favor.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay.
Read, read the first part of the sentence, it's a, a maximum of 3%.
I understand what maximum of means.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Great. Thank you. Um, any other comments on this one?
I guess.
Commissioners Alstra?
No, go ahead.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rhodey?
Just to clarify, I, you know, the second part of the sentence begins with and instead of beginning with or. So it, the second part does not exclude the first part, or it would have started with an or.
No, I, I, that's, I understand, that's why I wanted to make sure that, uh, it wasn't saying this plus this, right? Like, you know, having two different base amounts, uh, which, um, still 100% clear on, but I, I understand that, you know, by and large, we won't be going over 3% of, of anything, so, um, that won't happen.
Great, great. Yes.
Okay, uh, if I could just
Oh, continue, please.
And, and I guess this is more in connection with our fund balance policy.
We, we can get to that one right after this one.
Well, okay, um, I guess my concern again with the 3% is when we get to the fund balance policy, my understanding is that we're doing that to streamline, um, and to place as much of our resources into the general fund, fund, right? Karen, is that correct?
We're going to take up the
No, I understand that, I want to finish with this point, so that
We're going to take up the fund balance policy next.
Yeah, for sure. I, I guess it's more of a question for Karen is if, if the idea of the fund balance policy has took more consolidated resources in the general fund, you know, does it make sense to have even 3% stuck into a contingency fund? And why wouldn't we just move to streamline those two? And maybe that's just an accounting thing I'm not getting, right?
Uh, I, I will ask Karen to come up after we vote on the operating budget policy and then have her, ask her to speak to that.
Okay.
Uh, any other comments on this one? Uh, okay, so the suggested motion or the motion, uh, was to approve the revised operating budget policy and advance it to a second reading before the Board of Commissioners. Uh, if there's no other questions, um, then I guess we'll go to a roll call vote.
All right, Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Uh, no.
Mr. Bonama.
Yes.
Mrs. Wenzel.
Yes.
Mrs. Mitoma.
Yes.
Mrs. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Kleynans.
Yes.
Mr. Belnap.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Yes.
And Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, the next up, nine B is the fund balance policy. The suggested motion is to approve the revised fund balance policy and advance it to a second reading before the Board of Commissioners.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Um, I guess I'll see if Karen would like to come up and address the 3% maximum and perhaps comment on the fact that the recent amounts were 1% or?
I think the fund balance policy really, um, is in an effort to consistently treat all, um, general fund dollars the same. So it is in all funds and all departments. It's a one-year budget. There is, um, departments receive a one-year operating budget and, and that's if it's not, if it's not used, it's lost and it, and we frequently hear if it's not restricted, it becomes part of, goes back to the general fund. You'll hear that, um, regularly. So this policy really, um, is streamlining that we had two of all of the funds that we've had in the county that were not being treated consistently with the other funds, departments within general fund and all the other areas in the county. So this really streamlines that, so everything is treated consistently, um, across the board.
Thank you.
And as far as the 3% or, um, as far as if it should be, the, the, the purpose of the contingency is really set so that, um, at budget time, we look at, um, you know, last year, the reason the contingency was so high was because we had contracts that were unsettled. Um, we had some preliminary idea that health insurance rates might be higher than what we originally, what, than what we were experiencing in prior years. So we were, um, we probably had some areas that were a less sure of. And maybe in years where we have a three-year contract, we know the amounts. Um, so we set that contingency amount so we can live on current year revenues. That's the goal is to live within a current year budget, live within our revenues. So that's how we try to set that contingency amount every year. And so that's the desire, that's why we set it in the general fund and that's, that's the purpose of it. And then, um, because it's, and then it's allocated to where it's needed throughout the year. And so you're trying to live within your current year resources.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioners Alstra?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, you know, it's a bit of a moot point, I know this is, I know this is first reading, but, you know, um, I, I, I guess just to address that, I mean, I don't see how we're treating them all the same if we're separating them out, but that's a separate point. To the, to the issue at hand, uh, could we, when you talk about, um, having a fund balance, um, only with restricted, non-spendable or committed by separate resolution, could we see that in the fund balances at the end of, when we're doing the budgets? You know, like last year, we had, we had that issue earlier on where there was X amount in the, in the public health fund balance, right? For example. And it was a composite of different things. And so we pulled out the general fund aspect of that, but there's still some funds left there. Could we just have that tag in a sense so that we know, oh, there's 250,000 in the public health fund. It is specifically for this reason. Would that be too hard to do?
You can, and
Because of, you know, pathways to better health, for example.
Right, so you would know our estimate, I mean, you would know the budgetary numbers, obviously none of that has actually happened yet. We're estimating the amount of revenues pathways will bring in and we're estimating the amount of expenditures they'll make. You will only have a budgetary figure, it's not, um, you know, hasn't happened yet.
Right, but if we're leaving things in fund balances and you say we're leaving them because they're restricted or non-spendable or committed by separate resolution, totally get that, but just make sure that we're tagging that so we know why. Um, like, oh, in 2023, there was 300,000 left in public health. Why wasn't there, oh, there's a little tag saying it's for just, just for, you know, clarity, clarity sake. So. Chair, thank you.
Was there anything else, Commissioner?
Kind of a point of clarity too. So implementation of these changes that we're addressing here in both A and B is really your way of Fiscal Services Department of standardizing our processes across the county?
I would say it's a standardization.
And so, and some of the issues that we bumped into last year, in fact, having excess funds in different And so, and some of the issues that we bumped into last year, in fact, having excess funds in different departments, probably avoid that this year. It has standardization.
I think the clear, uh, transparency and the ease of understanding, um, would have been, um, more obvious.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kleynions?
Uh, yeah, thanks. Uh, just being like super new to this whole thing, uh, then that new, that new language in Section B, the committed by separate resolution of the Board of Commissioners component, if the idea is to come for consistency and, um, standardization, doesn't that throw an element of randomness into that equation? And why was that put there?
So that's, um, uh, there's technical, that's the accounting speak of the different, how they break out fund balance. And the board can segregate fund balance. And they actually had a grant that they awarded Public Health to offset some revenue that they had lost during COVID. So it was for a very specific purpose. So they were waiting for this revenue to come back. And so they had awarded some extra funding until that had occurred. Well, that was not the purpose of that. They had specifically set this funding aside. They wanted it for this purpose. And so I don't think that was the purpose of this policy, was to pull that type of activity back. It was really for the, the unrestricted, the, the general fund support that had been provided and, um, and not needed.
Sure. I, I mean, I get that, and that makes perfect sense. I guess where I'm, um, kind of like running into, into just my own confusion up here is like, is, it seems like there's, I understand that the language has to be that way, because that's what lawyers like. Cool. But like it, there's no like indicated sort of like guardrails for, um, that commitment by separate resolution. Is that, is that folded in someplace further downstream, or is it a policy, is it a policy manual at some point, or?
It's the only way funds can be committed. The Board of Commissioners is the only, um, is the only way funds can be committed, and they can only be committed by separate resolution. It has to be. That's the only way funds get committed by the board by separate resolution.
But there's no metric. It's essentially, if the board feels that that's something that needs to be done, they just take it up as they do any other business? Okay.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments on this one? All right. Uh, seeing none, uh, let's go to the clerk for a vote. Thank you, Karen.
Hi, Mr. Bonama?
Yes.
Mr. Kleynions?
No.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mrs. Medema?
Yes.
Mrs. Wenzel?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mrs. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Belnap?
Yes.
And Mr. Moss?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move to 9C. Uh, the suggested motion is to go into closed session for the purpose of strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement pursuant to OMA Section 8C.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in support. Let's go to the clerk for a vote on this one.
Mr. Belnap?
Yes.
Mrs. Curran?
Yes.
Mrs. Medema?
Yes.
Mrs. Wenzel?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Kleynions?
Yes.
And Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Required two-thirds vote.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll be in closed session for the next little bit.
Okay, welcome back everyone. Exiting closed session of a motion related to the community mental health. It is to ratify the AFSMI Michigan CMH of Ottawa County negotiated contract effective through December thirty one of two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
To motion and support. Any additional discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, do we need a roll call?
Roll call, we'll go to the clerk. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
I have to earn my income somehow, I guess. Mr. Bergman, Mr. Zylstra.
Yes.
Mr. Belnap.
Yes.
Ms. Cosby. Mrs. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Kleinen.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Yes.
Mrs. Medema.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnema.
Yes.
Mrs. Wenzel.
Yes.
And Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, that will bring us to nine D, which was item O. The FY twenty twenty four budget adjustments. The suggested motion is to approve the FY twenty twenty four budget adjustments per the attached schedule.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. This one was pulled off consent by Commissioners Alstres, but we'll go to Doug next.
Appreciate that. On budget adjustment zero eight dash three nine four. The purpose of this amendment is to remove the Eagle grant from the fiscal twenty four budget because the project is no longer viable. And that's a million dollars.
Yes.
Taken out of the. Yeah, so I obviously wasn't in. But. My understanding is we approved a grant July of last year, June of last year for. GVSU. And then it was shifted to Holland. Question is to just clarify when Eagle denied the Holland part of that. Oh. Hi Karen.
Yeah, welcome Karen. Would you like to speak to this one a little bit? We, we had some discussion in finance and maybe just something similar.
I, well, I think that. Eagle originally approved us to be the pass through. And then they, under the Holland program, they did not want us to be the pass through anymore. And now they potentially are going to work with Holland individually.
Okay. I, I guess just for kind of clarify, I guess my original thought was that we would go back to the original approval of last year for Allendale. And it looks like the whole grant has been taken away and it's kind of where I understand that part of it.
During, during the committee meeting, it wasn't that the grant was being taken away. It was that this was cleaning up the numbers and that the, the, the department is still holding on to the grant, hoping to do something with it.
Okay.
That's, that was my understanding.
I don't, I wasn't aware that it was going back to Allendale. It was going, I think it's going to. I thought that they were going to work with Holland still, but just directly. Oh. Oh, yeah. It's the one that knows, I'm sorry.
Welcome. Yeah, would you like to add a little more detail?
Yeah, I am holding on to the grant as my hope with Eagle. I'm still going to try to start working with the Allendale area, Grand Valley or something to have that site too. Because it might be beneficial with the new materials management planning committee items and stuff.
So what? Where does the, the action that we took last June, where does that sit? I mean, obviously we took action to approve the Allendale site.
That's, that's actually not accurate. We didn't approve an Allendale site.
I, I said the new center would be in Allendale, I'm just reading the, the request, I mean.
That, that was the original request, but that's not how the actual vote of the board occurred. You have to go back and look at the exact details.
Okay, maybe you can explain then, you know, what is the, the thought process or Kim? I mean, I think a lot of folks reached out to me and said, what happened to the original Allendale project, right? I mean.
Yeah. From my, from my understanding, what we approved in the first part of it was to approve the grant.
Right.
Yeah, and that we would start, you know, the process of looking into all the items. And with, with a lot of pieces going on, a lot of funding stuff going, going on, that we decided to see, look, other options too. Which the city of Holland was a little bit further ahead at the time in theirs. So we're like, well, we are not quite there with our budgetary items related to my program. So maybe this might be a more viable option for now. And then with the city of Holland, and Eagle decided that that's too far away from what we were hoping to with the intention of the grant. Being that Allendale was more centralized, had that college population, a lot of apartments and condos, which is the focus of what we were trying to do with this new site. So they would not let us do, give it to the city of Holland. City of the Holland now has applied for their own infrastructure grant. And I have asked for an extension so that maybe we can still look into that option. Because from my understanding of the law, a sixth site might be helpful to meet the goals that are required by the new law.
Okay. So. I mean, this is a question for the chair. What happened to the original agenda item then that we approved? You're saying we didn't approve location, we just approved the grant.
That is my understanding that what the board did was accept and approve a grant.
Right.
Yes.
With the idea that it may be cited in Allendale, is what you're saying, right?
That it may be cited in Holland. It was actually then, it went to Holland. There was months and months of work done to work with Holland. And then, as Kim is explaining, a state, I believe, has indicated they would rather have Holland. The city of Holland apply for their own separate grant. And so now, this is a, a budget adjustment to clean up the budget numbers since, you know, that million dollar grant is not in our current budget. So this doesn't change the acceptance of the grant, this is just a budget item.
Right, I totally get that and I appreciate your explanation of that. I guess going back to, you know, the item that we passed in June of, of last year. The thinking was that it would be possibly cited in Allendale.
In Ottawa. Yes.
I guess I'm just reading here, it said would be located in Allendale Charter Township, so. That was my understanding of the agenda item at the time.
There was a lot of discussion on where.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And so we'll have, in general, we'll have to wait and see what comes up from Kim and, and administration and what else might happen with this grant. This is just a budgetary cleanup.
I, I get it, I understand what budget adjustments are, I appreciate your definition of that. I guess, you know, people have reached out to me and said, what happened to that site? And what, what you're saying is there was never that site. There was only acceptance of a grant which may be cited someplace in Ottawa County.
Correct, and then it was sent to the city of Holland, working with our partners in Holland. And after months, apparently, the state would rather have the city of Holland apply for their own.
I totally get that, I just want to address the fact that residents, you know, have been reaching out and asking what happened to the site now. What you're saying is there never was a site in Allendale, there was only acceptance of a grant with the thinking that it may or may not be placed in Allendale.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I might.
Yeah, Commissioner Bonnema and Commissioner Rhodey.
And, and Kim, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you're dreaming of something, Doug. There wasn't a site in Allendale that was discussed. This grant though, was more of a needs assessment grant to do the discovery phase of where the need is greatest. Where this service would be implemented, implemented at the, at the, the highest level, biggest need. And of course, Grand Valley has a lot of refuse, a lot of solid waste that needs to be dealt with. So it was one of the locations, Allendale Township, that was being discussed. So I don't think it was ever determined that it would be there, but that.
I'm just, I'm just reading here, it says would be located in Allendale.
I can verify, the hope, what is Grand Valley? Grand Valley had said, yes, we have some land available for you. Grand Valley is still the intention, not Grand Valley. Grand Valley was someone that came up and said, you, you want to do this area? You see the need here, so do we, we've seen it, Allendale Charter Township has seen the need as well. The hope is still to have a site to help with that population of Allendale, that's still the hope. I am, you know, plugging and chugging with all my pieces I have to work with. I'm still hoping the Allendale area is the intent, which was the intent of the grants, you are correct on that. Some assessments came in, some financial things occurred, and so things are shifting. And then the materials management plan. So if, you know, and then there's some other items too, there was concerns with the site in Allendale with parks being located directly next to it. So we want to make sure that when we do go forward with the site in Allendale, if it does, with the grant, that it makes, it checks everyone's boxes. Because the whole goal is sustainability and to make sure we have these resources, not just for Grand Valley students, which there are a lot of them in Allendale. But there's a lot of apartments that are in Allendale, a lot of condos, a lot of people that just don't have access to the recycling and the other materials that we offer at our sites. So yes, my intention is to hopefully have it in the Allendale area. We're still talking with Grand Valley, if there's anyone else that wants to, you know, step up, we're willing to do that. It's just right now, I'm, I'm looking for an extension from Eagle, so I'm hoping to have that soon.
I appreciate that information.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your, your time on. Explaining that for us.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Rhodey, did you have anything else?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things, I appreciate that, Kim. That was my recollection as well, we had a lot of discussions about cost versus benefit. Sometimes accepting a grant is not always the best thing, or utilizing a grant is not always the best thing if long term it ends up costing more than you anticipate. So I, I remember a lot of discussions about that, concerns about location and parks. And so while sometimes things look great on the surface, we need to make sure that long term, that they are wise decisions. And so I appreciate you being careful with this, especially, you know, representing Allendale. We want to make sure that this is done right, if it's done there. So I appreciate that. And then I would just say that there were a lot of discussions that happened over multiple meetings. And so if there are remaining questions on this for the public or Commissioners Zylstra, you know, there's a lot of meetings that have been videotaped. And they're available for people to go back and watch because this all happened in a very transparent manner.
Thank you, anything?
I just had one quick question for Kim, you're in negotiation with Eagle now to hang on to that grant. When are you, when do you feel they'll come back with a, sure, you can have that? Or what do you, I mean, how long is the timeline for that before we actually know if this is ether or if we get to possibly use it?
Yeah, so technically the grant ends in, then September, they do fiscal year two. And I'm anticipating before then, because they'll probably have an updated grant agreement with a new, a new date on it. So that hopefully it will then come before the board as well. I'm anticipating sooner than later, but at the same time, I was informed that Eagle is doing some restructuring within the materials management because of the, the new plan. Essentially, it's all the recycling people with, you know, solid waste, hazardous waste people, all these people are now together, so they're doing restructuring. So that might slow it down some. I'm hoping to be able to present something sooner than later, so that's my, my hope. Especially with needing that kind of information too, to know if we need to go forward with it with the materials management portion.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Any other comments or questions on this one? Thank you, Kim. The suggested motion, or the motion was to approve the FY twenty twenty four budget adjustments per the attached schedule. I guess we'll go to a roll call vote on this one.
Sure, Mr. Zylstra.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Mr. Kleinen.
Yes.
Mr. Belnap.
Yes.
Ms. Cosby.
Yes.
Mrs. Medema.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnema.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey.
Yes.
Mrs. Curran.
Yes.
Mrs. Wenzel.
Yes.
And Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. We are on ten A, and I guess we will continue to hear from our clerk. This is the Ottawa County Clerk's Office twenty twenty three annual report. Welcome, Justin.
It's good to see you guys again from my seat over there. And there's, pressure is on because I know that Joe Bush finished his annual report in under ten minutes and feeling a little nervous about that, so.
Going for a record.
Do what I can do, that's for sure. Obviously, there's a lot in the document, but if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer those now. And also, we'll cover kind of the highlights, but, you know, I think for us, the really important thing here is our, is our mission. It's, it's a drum that I beat relatively often with our staff and with the public as well, but. Our mission of helping our customers and encouraging their trust in government. And I think that is really at the heart of what we try to do every single day. You know, when it comes to most services, people can't choose where they go for county services. And we just want them to have an experience that matters and that builds that trust relationship. Twenty twenty three was a, a busy year for us. We worked hard on ensuring transparency from our team and listening to folks and doing some things that we hoped were customer focused, cost effective things. You know, the big one, which, you know, I have this board to thank for, as well as Commissioners Ebel and Terpstra. The approval of that, you know, collaboration with our twenty three local units of government to conduct early voting in a way that we believe is, you know, uniform, secure. Definitely cost effective, on track to hopefully save a little over a million dollars in this, in this year. But we've also, you know, we're doing a whole lot of other things as well, serving thousands of customers, you know, over the counter, whether it's court records or land records. And I, I just would say, as I reflected on this report, none of this would be possible without the forty three people on our team. They're incredible employees, we're really so grateful for the staff that we have, as well as all of the county departments that support us. I mean, we just wouldn't have been able, I think specifically early voting, just that alone, I'm without Karen and her team. In fiscal, without HR, without facilities, just so many, without corporation counsel. So just a lot of thanks and gratitude from me to all of the other folks that support us as well. This is just our organizational chart, again, I, I frequently have a recurring nightmare that I'm the only person that shows up to work in the morning. And, and that's been one of the fun things we've been able to do using a Clifton Strengths Finders process, just kind of building that into our team. We are in the community a lot, and I think for us, one of the cultural things that we've tried to do is to ensure that we are, every quarter, we're, we're supporting a different charity within the county. And that's something that I think is just a positive for our team to give back. All right. Vital records, just some general, you know, 10,000 foot budget overview there. 1,999 babies born, for whatever reason, I could not get that to 2,000. Just makes me feel uncomfortable with that, you know, 1,999. But that is just a slight decrease from, from last year. But I mean, those trends relatively stable. And we issued a lot of copies of birth records. Obviously, that's one of the main customer service functions of our vital records team. A lot of folks need copies of those birth records. Always a popular slide, the top baby names of the year, Theodore and Olivia. So, you know, whether it's 1924 or 2024, those names probably look very, fairly similar. Number of deaths also just slightly down. Number of copies of death certificates, that's, that's always a high number. We've been able to issue those electronically, which has been a huge help for a lot of our families that, you know, have a loved one pass away, just being able to immediately get that death certificate so that they can get their business taken care of. 710 business registrations. So anyone opening a local business here in Ottawa County comes into our office, files a bond and, excuse me, not files a bond, but opens, opens their, saves their name, basically holds their business name with the county. Notary public are required to file a bond. And we had 500 of those, a little over 500 notaries public. Lots of records. And, you know, our focus is to try as best as we can to make this a convenient process for customers. So we do drive the online process because if it's easier for folks to do this at home, and obviously we need to ensure that it's safe and secure to do that. But it's definitely been a positive thing and a trend that we see growing. There's obviously a couple of things here that we essentially require in person. A couple of those business registration essentially has to be an in-person process at this point. So. Kind of flipping through, sorry, my. I think my thing got tired, Jordan. I don't know what's going on here. I apologize. Okay. There we go. CPLs definitely seen pretty consistent numbers here as well, but 1,400 new applicants coming in. And, you know, year over year, we're, we're in the close to that thousand to 1,500 range of new CPL applicants. And then, of course, it's a four-year renewal process, and so a lot of renewals happen. Renewals, a few years ago, the legislature changed the process there for renewals. So a lot of those, they all occur online. And that again is a convenience for our CPL customers, easier access to that process on the online piece. Some data there. Honor rewards, we're consistently seeing, you know, growth in our program. And I, I think, you know, one thing that we're, our team is really excited about. We've had a couple of meetings now with Jason and the new Veterans Office. And we're just really excited about whatever we can do to partner and, and work with, with him and that team to serve our veterans better. But this is a great discount program that is totally free to our veterans. Basically a simple ID, we take the photo, issue them a free card, and they get a lot of discounts and services from area businesses. We added seven. We have a little over 300, almost 400 businesses total that offer some sort of a discount to our veterans. And again, just some other vital records area trends in terms of what we're seeing. But again, relatively stable there, nothing too, nothing too surprising. On the registered deeds side, again, the registered deeds is generally a revenue generating office for the county. We have a pretty low expense on the registered deeds side and collect a lot of revenue in the form of document fees that come in, statutory document fees as well as copies. So there's just a breakdown of our funds. A lot of funds collected for the state transfer tax. 2.2 million collected in county revenue specifically goes to the general fund. Recording fees also go to the general fund. So that essentially makes us a revenue positive office as a whole, and that is because of the registered deeds. So thank you, Rachel. Our free online record search actually also helps to generate some revenue because by statute, we have to charge $1 per page. It's a great service to be able to offer folks to search for free. And this seems kind of like common sense, but a few years ago, it was not so, so much the case. And so people can search their records, see what they have and what's been recorded in their name, as well as then pay $1 per page for any document that they would like to keep. And here's our records, and this is again, document recording itself. So 24,000 documents recorded online and 33,000 recorded in total. So a vast majority of our land records come to us through a secure online recording process where we have a relationship with vetted vendors who essentially are title companies, law offices that handle that. And we believe that is a, a solid way to continue to guard against property fraud. Passports, one of the few things we do that is not statutorily mandated is we are a passport agent. So anybody looking to travel in the next couple of months, feel free to come down and visit us. We can do pictures for you there. We can set up an appointment. And that's just a good customer service for us that, that has worked really well. We have a part-time individual who does that almost, almost solely. That is her responsibility in the team. But we almost 1,000 passports processed in 2023. CPL fingerprinting, again, a lot of fingerprints issued, a little bit more actually fingerprints than, than new CPLs issued. But that is a service that we provide for residents. So it's more of a one-stop shop on the CPL process and they don't have to go elsewhere for fingerprints and then come back to us. Plattboard, Chairman Moss is well familiar with our plat board. Again, one of the statutory duties of the county clerk and register of deeds is to sit on the plat board. And we've approved 11 total final plats in Ottawa County in 2023.
And it was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun. I mean, legal descriptions are, are a blast, you know. One of those ways that we try to be just taxpayer conscious is, is on our postage. And a couple of years ago, we began essentially just returning the documents that are sent to us for recording. Instead of doing that by mail, we have a secure electronic process where we can return those documents. And that's saving us substantially in postage costs month over month, over $5,000 that we saved in 23, just doing that. Again, there are some numbers from the register of deeds side in terms of total funds receded. And again, we had a couple of really big years. I would attribute this a lot to, you know, the, the low, low interest rates that we had kind of during 2020 and coming out of those COVID years. A lot of refinancing was happening and so a lot of documents being recorded. Obviously, property being purchased as well, but the majority of that, we've seen the trends in the actual warranty deeds or new homes being purchased hasn't really declined as much as the refinancing piece. So that's why we're seeing a little bit of a drop there. Some trend information for you. On the circuit court side, we have receded just over $3.5 million. I know Susan Franklin was here a couple of weeks ago talking about her team and the, and the work that we are doing to, you know, take in that fines, fees and costs, restitution payments. And our teams really work hand in hand together with the circuit court in doing that process. All funds that are collected essentially by the court are receded through our office and managed through our office. And so that's a big part of what our circuit court records team does. In addition, of course, to being the filing official for the court in a little over 4,500 new cases as well as 131,000 documents. It's a whole lot of pages. One of our main goals and focus points over the next couple of years is to continue driving toward fully electronic processes. You know, in Michigan right now, the electronic record in the court is considered the official record. And we work very closely with our judges, many of whom like to have that physical paper record on the bench with them as they are in front of people and making hard decisions. But that's a whole lot of paper and that's one of the things that we are, you know, looking to improve process wise as we go forward. Jury trials, again, quite a few jurors called to serve in 2023. And these are all very, very customer service related touchpoints with our team because we're answering a lot of their questions. We are kind of the conduit to the chief judge as he adjudicates whether or not a juror can be excused. So there's a lot of customer service process that goes along in there. And again, 29% increase in the number of jurors called, partially because of a little bit of a higher caseload, but more because we wanted to see a broader spectrum of jurors available for our judges for particular trials. One of our favorite things that we get to do in our office is helping the adoption process. And we had 107 of those last year, which is almost 5% of an increase over the, the past couple of years, actually. So it's kind of a cool experience for our team. They deal with a lot of stuff in the courts. This is one of the positive things that we get to do. Trend information for you. Elections, not really much to talk about there. We'll move on. I'm just kidding. Our elections budget, obviously 2023 was actually a, a smaller year for us. You know, it's in what we call an off-election year, which could mean a number of things. It could mean, well, that was off, or that could mean a quieter year. So definitely, as you look at turnout over the, the three elections that we had last year, lower voter turnout, you know, August 8th, for example, in the cities was a very small election. It's interesting to see these turnout numbers and of course, the November city election. May is generally election reserved largely for millage votes. You know, our, our schools tend to put millage questions on the ballot. Some local municipal governments do as well. What's interesting is the correlation there between the number of absentees. So in May, for example, which was a smaller May election than we had this year, for example, where just a lot of jurisdictions had, had an election, 70% absentee and 42% in the August primary, 60% in November. I suspect these numbers will shift a little bit. In, in a larger turnout elections, we generally see that absentee percentage dropping a bit. Same-day voter registration, which was enacted by voters in a constitutional amendment in 2018. That's something that our clerks do, our local clerks. And we had relatively, you know, consistent numbers, I would say, over the past few years for an off-year election, for a non-even year. A lot of different events in the community for our elections team. You know, we hosted coffees with the clerk in, in various parts of the county, which were not necessarily fully elections focused, but just a lot of questions about elections and that process. So we get to talk to voters. One of our favorite things to do as well is attend naturalization ceremonies, celebrate new citizens. And the first thing that they get to do coming off of that ceremony is to sign up and register to vote with our team, and that's a very cool celebration. It's just great to see the excitement that people have in doing that, and they've worked hard to get to that point. The other thing that I personally love to do is talk to kids about voting. So over the past couple of years, we've had Oreo elections. They've been very successful in the amount of Oreos consumed. And hopefully successful too in, in just the, the touch point that we're having with our kids about how important it is to, to be involved and to make your voice heard in elections. Social media this year, we added Instagram in 2023, which I'm told by others on our staff younger than me is a cooler form of communicating with voters. So we're definitely want to make sure that we're reaching our, our people just in, in general communication. But 41,900 was our reach on Facebook in 2023. A big couple of changes that we had in 23, building into our e-filing process of campaign finance. And as you guys all know, on the candidate side, we've gone through a couple of changes with that, hopefully to make it smoother and better for our candidates. But the important thing is that we want to be completely transparent and have those records online and accessible and searchable to our voters. So we had some updates and changes there in 2023, adding that system. And again, early voting, happy to talk a little bit more about this, but this was a really big deal for us in 2023, something that we initiated essentially at the request of a number of our local clerks, something that we collaborated really closely with them on as well as our board. And I think, you know, as we, as we're moving into the second early voting election, it was a very successful run in February, a very small turnout. And I would estimate that our early voting turnout is going to continue to be relatively small percentage of our population. And I think that's also another reason why it's important to say, how can we conserve resources? And, you know, be responsible with the, the duties that we have to do in a manner that's just cost effective for all of our taxpayers. Sorry, Jordan. Couple of goals we have, obviously, for this coming year, early voting initiative is a big one. As we're executing on that right now, we had the public test for that yesterday. So we had a group of individuals in the room, bipartisan team of basically volunteers who helped us test several thousand ballots in our equipment, and we went through that whole process. But again, that's a big responsibility of our team this year is to effectively and securely carry that mission out. Another thing that we're focusing on in the next year is property fraud system, alert system awareness. So basically, we have a free, completely free service where people can sign up online, miottawa.org/rod for an alert when your name is recorded in, in our land records. And so it's just a really great tool, simple. You can get a text, you can get an email, you can get a phone call, whichever you prefer, or all of the above. But if somebody records a document in your name, you want to know about that. And that is the easiest way that we can alert people to a potential fraudulent incident. A couple of other, you know, kind of ongoing goals that we have that we're getting really close to. Electronic roll call and agenda management software for this board that will just hopefully streamline the process of how we put together agendas and as, and, and collect the minutes and record the minutes as well. So we're excited to see that. That was a COVID grant that we're just sort of finally getting into the implementation stages actually pretty shortly. And then the rollout of our case management system, which is statewide system that's huge for our courts. And so we will be spending a whole lot of staff hours over the next couple of months implementing that process. And we continue to focus on our development of our team. I think that's a priority number one for me as we serve customers, is making sure that we are serving our team as well. So thank you for listening. Thank you for your support and for being here. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Right. Thank you very much, Justin. Any questions? Commissioner Cosby?
I got a list. So do you want to go first?
Okay.
And I provided my list.
Yeah, you gave me your list.
So I want to qualify my statement here too, and you and I talked about this early on. So what I'm most interested in, and I think in the majority of our population, is that every legal citizen of the United States that's qualified can vote. And no one vote is more important than another. I think it's the great equalizer in, in our country. And I think it's so important that we have processes in place that protect that. So as I, you know, as I'm reflecting here on the Carter Baker Report from 2005 too, as we start to talk about the absentee balloting, right? And so some of the question, or question that I have is the tracking process for absentee ballots. When we, when those are requested and we send those out, how do we track when, when they return?
Yeah, sure.
How many are left out there? And then who can actually return the absentee ballot?
Yeah, great questions. And the tracking is really important, and I would agree, you know, we live in a day and age where people tracking their Amazon packages to the block. And, you know, I think there is an expectation on the part of our customers that this is just common sense, not only from, you know, a customer service level, but from a security level. And actually, I believe it was the 2018 ballot amendment that required additional tracking. So for years, we've had this pretty rudimentary tracking process using the qualified voter file. When you, if you were to request an absentee ballot, there's a simple barcode on the front of your ballot that identifies you. It's a, just a sticker with your name and address. That goes to you. It's scanned out of the system before the clerk mails it. So you can then go to michigan.gov/vote and say, track my absentee. And you can say the clerk mailed the ballot on whatever date. And then that return is also tracked. So when the clerk receives it back. So when the clerk receives it back, which is a great check, I mean, I've always encouraged voters to do that, make sure that your ballot has been recorded as being received. But that's pretty basic, and again, I think we can get stronger with our tracking process, like where is the ballot now? You know, we, the US Postal System has these features, we have these features. That is something that Secretary of State was essentially required to do additionally, additional tracking through the 20,000, 2018 proposal, and they are working on a process that has yet to be fully rolled out where there's stronger tracking. We've actually talked to some vendors here in Ottawa County, in Kent County, some mailhouse vendors that can do some elements of better, you know, higher level tracking of absentee ballots. And I'm just talking about, the ballot was sent to the Grand Rapids Mail House, the ballot, you know, your expected delivery time, so forth. But that's sort of where we're at in the tracking process. The Qualified Voter File, though, is used to track who has issued a ballot, when it left the office and when it came back.
Okay. And so absentee ballots went out on the 22nd of June approximately? Is that correct?
Roughly, yeah.
So we're using Qualified Voter File then to track when they're coming back? And the ones that are open, so the ones that don't come back?
Correct, yeah. So I, and I just pulled some numbers after we chatted a minute ago. So a total of 49,532 ballots were issued, and when we say the 22nd, one of the challenging things that we have, and one of the positive things that we have is, is our decentralized process in Michigan. We don't actually handle any absentee ballots at the county level, it's all done at the local level. So our locals have a period of time, a window of time, they actually have, by 40 days prior to the election, they are required to send a ballot to anyone who has asked for one, which of course, we can get into that, that permanent ballot list, that's why this number is so high, right? The, the now, we have this option for voters to choose whether or not they would like a ballot automatically sent to them. And so that's a request that's on file, and our clerks are really, from the time the ballots arrive at their, you know, from the printer, they're working very hard to put those in envelopes, coordinate those with the voter file, scan those out and mail them.
Please hear that I have huge respect for the local clerks, as I have discussed with you.
I do too.
It's the process, and our legislators give us the process. It could be made a whole lot easier. So when those ballots come back, then do they come back to the local clerk?
Yeah, correct.
And then when are the ballots, the absentee ballots counted?
So absentee ballots have always historically been counted in Michigan on Election Day, so they are not allowed to be opened prior to 7:00 AM on Election Day. This past fall, in October of this year, the legislature passed essentially legislation that would allow for the early processing of absentee ballots, and that would begin totally at the discretion of the local clerk, essentially as to whether or not to do that, but it would begin one week prior to the election, up to one week prior to the election. And this is not really new, I mean, 43 states do some form of early processing of absentee ballots. Florida is one of the more prominent states that does it, and they actually have a requirement that ballots are processed as they are received, beginning the 25th day. So when the ballot is received in the mail, there is a team that opens it and counts it in a tabulator, and that's, you know, one of the reasons why results are, are early to report in those states, so.
Thank you. And then drop boxes, do you know the number of drop boxes that we have, and then how many are monitored?
Yeah, we have 27 total drop boxes. So every municipality in the, in the county has had a drop box really for quite a while, and, you know, 10, 20 years ago, those drop boxes were used for, you know, your tax bill, whatever you wanted to put in there that, when the township office was closed, you could, could get to the clerk or the treasurer, whoever. So we do have official ballot drop boxes on hand at every jurisdiction. Of course, now that is required by constitutional amendment, as well as one drop box for every 15,000 voters, registered voters. So for example, the Georgetown Township, Holland Township, the City of Holland are all meeting those requirements to have an additional drop box, but in those cases, they're all located on a municipal property as well. So it's a fire, fire stations in Holland Township and Georgetown Township, and I believe in the City of Holland as well, they're using their, you know, fire stations for that, and all of those are under video surveillance. We have, I believe, the last that I surveyed was early this year, we have two jurisdictions left in the county that do not have video footage on the drop boxes. So there's this weird grandfathering in of drop boxes that existed prior to October of 2020, are grandfathered in by the legislature to not need, not be required to have video footage until January of 2025. So that's been something we've been strongly encouraging our clerks to do. Again, that's a local decision, but we have been pushing for that, and a number of our jurisdictions have, have just said, no, we'll go early.
Then I also do want to acknowledge that you have made some changes for security purposes, and that is that chain of custody for absentee ballots. I think there were some changes made there, kind of a more kind of formalized process, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of, of, well, there have been a couple of legislative changes that have actually been positive in my mind about the chain of custody, and that involves how drop boxes are, are emptied by staff, and so it's required, two staff members are required, two individuals are always required, and there's a log essentially that has to be followed as well as appropriate sealing of, and this is including a drop box that's maybe not physically connected to a building, but it's on the premise of a building. So they have to go out, put them in an approved container, two individuals, and log that. So those chain of custody procedures have strengthened in the past couple of years, and that's, I think, a really positive note. One of the other things that we've done, again, with, with board support that I'm very grateful for, is this reminder to voters on the permanent list. So the permanent list, established in 2022 by constitutional amendment, a voter can say, I'm signing up to be mailed a ballot, and that is a different from previously where they were signed up to be mailed an application. So our concern there was, we want to make sure that we are keeping accurate lists and making sure that we know where our voters are before a ballot goes out. And so we essentially asked for funding at the county level to send a mass mailing to everyone on that list to say, hey, just as a reminder, you're signed up for this. If you'd like to, great, you can keep it. If you're, if you don't want to, call your clerk and, and get removed, or if you're going to be out of town in the next two weeks, because this is when your ballot's coming, let your clerk know. So that has resulted, the initial mailing was done in May, before the May election, and that resulted in over 2,000 addresses coming back to us as essentially, by the postal system. So the post office said, these people have either moved or they are, again, at a, ballots don't forward, right? So if you live in Florida for six months and you have your mail forward, your ballot will not forward. And so that was very effective, in my opinion, and then we've had another round of that, obviously, before August, which was far less. I think a couple of factors there. One is that we were able to clean the list, but two, May is still an election where voters are sometimes not at their residence. You know, we have a lot of Florida folks, so.
And you also instituted watermark ballots.
Watermark ballots, yeah. So we're excited about that. We have Ottawa, Washtenaw, Oakland, Muskegon, Livingston, Gennesee, Macomb, Emmett, Saginaw, Chihuahua County currently that are utilizing watermark ballots. And again, I just think it's one, one more tool in the toolbox for a voter to know, hey, I'm looking at an actual official ballot that was issued by my election official, just by holding the ballot up to the light when they get an absentee ballot or in the precinct or early voting. And so we really pushed on that. I think, you know, Chairman Moss is actually on a phone call with our print vendor. I think they initially, vendor, a Michigan vendor that we trust and have worked, and obviously works with all these other counties as well, but they just had some cost concerns, saying like, how are we gonna make this work? And I, and I said, I think I can get some other customers to, to support this, and I think we can pay for this. So successful, and we're excited about that.
One more question for you. So what are your thoughts about Governor Whitmer Lansing's historic election bill passing? Do you see any difficulties instituting the new legislation, like protecting election workers? That's punishable by a five-year felony, or is also improving elections as well?
I mean, I think there, there have been, and without, you know, specifically relating to a lot, a lot of those bills, there's been so much legislation that's passed, and just in general, I would say that it is, we're in a really challenging time right now as election administrators to try to keep up with the vast changes, some of those voter-initiated changes, but then many of them legislative changes as well. You know, a few of those things I think of as, as being good things, like the absentee ballot tracking, the, the better chain of custody procedures. The other thing that changed legislatively was allowing for individual observers to come into absentee counting boards and leave. So before, there was a sequestration required by law for the past 150 years, if you went into a place where absentee ballots were counted for the security of the secrecy of the vote until the polls closed, you had to stay there. So that was a challenge for individuals and groups organizing observers to watch, because you got to recruit somebody who's willing to literally stay in that room without a cell phone, you know, and, and so those things changed. It's still a felony to disclose any information before the polls close, similar to how we treat our jurors, right? You, you can go home as a juror, but you can't disclose what was, what was said. So those have been positive changes. There have been some, some also changes in my mind that have been very challenging for election administrators, just in the volume of the number of things that we have to do. Some of these things, including things that are positive, like when a, when a signature needs to be cured on an absentee ballot, you know, the, our clerks are looking at these, every single one of them, and matching who gets the voter file. We're required now to text, email, and phone call every voter, and I can tell you right now, I mean, we're 27 days out from the primary election. Our, our local clerks are working very, very hard at signature verification, but now there's this whole additional communications piece that, just the infrastructure's not there. So, you know, I think, not that it's a bad thing, a voter should know, hey, there's a problem with your, your signature, but I think some of those challenges are infrastructure-related, and that's why we've been very grateful, and I continue to say, we have felt the support of our funding unit here strongly. That's not the case for a lot of my colleagues and for a lot of our local units as well.
I imagine as a county commissioner and other county commissioners, we'd invest in making sure that we keep our elections as secure as possible. I want to really thank you for the time you've spent in allowing me those questions.
Yeah, absolutely, happy to.
Every legal citizen of the United States should be able to vote.
Yeah, amen to that.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wenzel had some questions. We'll see what's after that. Go ahead.
My first question is, I'm volunteering a part of an initiative to clean up the QVF files.
Sorry, can you grab your microphone? Thanks.
I am volunteering with an organization that's working to clean up our QVF files.
Yeah.
Over half of my neighbors have people in their homes that are voting that do not live in their homes. Is there anything being done in the clerk's office? It's, I mean, it's literally thousands of names that we're going through, we're knocking doors, we're asking who lives there, and it seems to be kind of a mess. It's not accurate. So is there anything being done to clean that up?
So you're saying over half of your neighbors have individuals registered and who are voting? Yeah, I would absolutely encourage you to get me that information as quickly as possible, particularly because we're so close to an election, we would need to report that to law enforcement right away.
Fortunately, we have pages and pages and pages of that, so I.
Send them over.
Is there anything that you're doing?
Yeah, so our team, I am not considered a voter, like, we have two main voter registration officials in the state of Michigan, the Secretary of State and our local clerks. So we are sort of a conduit, we see voter information, but I can't change any voter information. So, you know, one of the ways that I've advocated strongly for our involvement in cleaning the rolls was a couple of years ago, when I supported and advocated for legislation to allow county clerks to remove immediately deceased voters. So we get the death records, right? We had 1,930 people die last year in Ottawa County, we see those immediately. So we are now able, under the law, to flag for removal. We still can't remove them because the local clerk has to do that, but we're flagging it immediately upon receipt for removal. The other way that we're doing that, I think, is with this, this reminder card, right? We've removed voters immediately from those 1,900 names that came back. We've also put them on the list, essentially under the NVRA, there's certain rules that we have to follow before you remove a voter, our local clerks have to follow. But our local clerks are doing that because we're getting that information and sending it immediately to the local clerks. They're putting them on as challenged voters, saying we have to verify these addresses before they're issued a ballot and so forth. So within the, the bounds of the law, and the other thing that we do consistently before every election is we, we look, and this is again, you know, a simple thing, but we'll, we'll do a, a call of voters over the age of 100, and we'll check our death records just one more time, you know, to see if there's anything missed here. We also have a staff person who handles a lot of our death records and funeral home processes, who, you know, we, we recognize addresses of, of voters sometimes in, you know, assisted living facilities. And I think we removed, just a few weeks ago, before absentee ballots went out, about 36 names out of 120, 119, I'll have to get the name, the exact figure, 119 people over 100, 36 of them not living that we removed. So this is a constant process, right? I mean, there's millions of records in the system. The Qualified Voter Files connected statewide, so every local clerk has access to it, and the Secretary of State has access to it, and then we have viewing access at the county level. But there are records changing every, I mean, as I've been talking here, people have moved, people have been deceased, you know, and, and that is a reality that we're constantly dealing with in the data. But I feel very confident that individuals who are not, you know, there may be, like, there may be deceased individuals on the voter rolls who are in the process of getting removed, but votes are not being recorded in their names. That's why I was so concerned when you said that your neighbors have people listed in their house who are voting, because that's a felony offense, and we would need to report that immediately to law enforcement. That has not been my experience of what we have seen at all over the past 17 years that I've been in election administration with access to the QVF.
We also ran into an address that was vacant land that had multiple voters on it. So we were like, how can vacant land have multiple voters on that land? So for the public that is researching this, what is the best route for them to go and report this?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, and I think, you know, we've, we've talked before and have talked with a couple of groups before who are doing some of this work, and we appreciate it. I mean, there, there's work there that can be very effective in helping us navigate some things. I'm thinking of a situation in the City of Holland where we had, you know, an instance where essentially a church was allowing folks to register who are homeless for receiving mail at the church, and they were, you know, getting driver licenses and essentially utilizing that address as a place to get, to register to vote, and that technically is not allowed under the statute, right? So there's other ways to do that for someone who doesn't have a home, to use non-traditional housing address and so forth, but that was brought to our attention by your group, I believe, and we were able to address that with the city clerk with that church. So those are things I'm always encouraging folks to, to explore and to do. So there's a couple of, as you probably know, there's a couple of ways to do that officially under the statute, if you're challenging someone, whether it's a voter or a voter registration process, that you would need to, to submit an affidavit challenging that voter essentially to the registration official. And I know we've, we've reviewed some of those materials, some of those affidavits for you guys as well. So if folks have those concerns, I think that is, you know, that's step number one. But if you actually have evidence that a, that a crime has been committed, right? In some cases, you know, deceased person on the rolls for a month, and that's not a crime, right? The crime involves somebody utilizing that deceased person's name to commit a felony and cast a ballot, and that, that's what we would want to know immediately and, and report immediately.
Next question is, as far as, I spoke with Roger Victory and Nancy DeBoer, because our imaging has been turned off on all of our machines, it's the only physical proof of how a ballot comes from a voter's hand, goes directly into the machine, and photos are taken of that. You had described it, it slows the machines down. Most everybody I've spoken with said they don't care how much slow the machines are, they want a picture of what their ballot looked like when it went into the machine.
Yeah.
As with all other businesses, if a piece of equipment isn't working properly, we get it fixed, we call the corporation that has manufactured it, we find out why, or we get new product. I just wondered, I know Roger and Nancy were saying this needs to be corrected, and I know people say, well, we have, we have ballots that are in sealed boxes locked away, but as in other states, and it has been proven, ballots are coming in from outside sources that are not from voters. So what are we going to do about getting? So what are we going to do about getting that imaging turned back in on our mach- turned back on on our machines so we can get actual physical pictures of what everybody's ballots look like?
First of all, thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk publicly about ballot imaging. Secondly, and probably more importantly, we have not seen any evidence at all, and if you have some, please do submit it to me right away, of ballots coming into our communities from outside sources. That is not something that I have ever been made aware of, or any of our local clerks have ever presented to me. There's a whole lot of checks and balances that go through the process when people record absentee ballots. Again, we were talking a little bit about qualified voter file. It's ballot to voter, ballot to voter, ballot to voter. That has to match, has to match in the clerk's office before Election Day, it has to match in early voting, it has to match in the pre-processing end, it has to match in the county canvas of votes where a bipartisan team is getting together to literally look at those lists and say, these are the voters who are recorded on the qualified voter files having cast an absentee ballot, and this is the number of absentee ballots cast in that machine. So if you're telling me that others outside of our communities are sending ballots in, we need evidence of that, and we need factual, okay, and that makes sense. I don't, I can't speak to other areas. I would say that's very highly unlikely, because those areas also have those checks and balances. We're not unique in that. On the, on the digital imaging process, as we have talked about a number of times, digital imaging of the ballots is a is a unique, and uh, it's a unique feature to our vendor. That was essentially a, an additional feature, a security feature, and it's not that I don't like that feature, but that feature is currently not being used anywhere in the state of Michigan, and it is because we do not have, through testing, all the way da- ba- back, dating back to the R F P process, uh, as well as more recent testing, we do not have confidence that our equipment is able to handle taking a digital image of hundreds of thousands of ballots in in the size it is, and I equate it frequently to, you know, if you have a laptop computer and you have a whole lot of videos stored on that, your computer is going to slow down and lose its effectiveness. So we do not actually disagree on the um, relevance of having a digital image of our ballots. Um, that is not something that I am opposed to. Uh, however, that is something that I place as secondary to ensuring that our election equipment is functioning properly for all of our voters to use our election equipment and to trust that it's working properly. And we've been in situations where our vendor has specifically said, don't turn this function on. I've had colleagues that have used the function and have been very disappointed with the performance of the equipment itself, and that's just not something, that's not a risk I am willing to take at this point until we have further assurances that it is safe. But I, what I would say is that our ballots, a digital picture of those ballots is not official, and it does not approve adjudication, right? It doesn't prove how the machine counted the ballots. It proves what the ballot looked like. You're absolutely right. So there is a level there that is a benefit, right? And I'm not disagreeing with you on that, but I think the real benefit that we have is we have the receipts. That is so critically important. We have the paper ballot receipts. We have a paper ballot that backs up every single vote that is recorded in our canvas, and we audit those. We go into an audit in a public setting, open those sealed containers, look at those ballots. I invite you to come. I I would love to see you at one of our audits, because we are opening them up in full public view and physically hand counting to make sure that, again, those ballots match what was what was cast on election day.
I just think for me, it, and especially, we've seen it happen in other states, it's going to court, and there should be no reason we can't do that. It, everybody I've talked to said, I don't care how long it takes. It's a security measure that was put on the machine for a specific purpose, and I think we should use it as intended.
Thanks for your comments.
All right. Anyone else have any questions or?
I think I need to buy Joe Bush a beer, but I'm okay.
Commissioner Bonnema.
Mr. Obuck, uh, just a quick question about, you know, early voting is happening right now, and you also said that those uh, ballots are being mailed into the local clerk's office, not to you yet. Uh, as early voting is going on, it could happen where somebody, for whatever reason, has changed their mind and regret how they voted.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a process in place that I wouldn't mind if you would explain called spoiling your ballot to, could you just talk about that process and?
Yeah, we get those calls every election for sure, and there is a process in Michigan. Michigan's kind of unique, because a lot of states don't allow this, but in Michigan, you can spoil a ballot that you've mailed back or sent back to the clerk. Uh, and new legislation has changed this as well, lots and lots of changes, but eight days prior to the election is the cutoff. So on the eighth day prior to any election, at that point, you can no longer, um, you know, go back in, receive a new ballot and spoil your old one. But if you've made a mistake or uh, changed your mind, um, voters have that opportunity up till, up until the eighth day prior to the election.
They should just walk into their local clerk's office?
Correct. We have to have something in writing. The local clerk will have something in writing for them to sign essentially, um, that they are that voter, and then they're able to uh, spoil and get reissued a new ballot.
Thanks.
The eight business days?
No, I think it's actually the eighth day, and I apologize, I don't know that date off the top of my head, but I think that is inclusive of the weekend. The reason that changed was because of the legislation that allows the pre-processing to occur beginning the seventh day. Um, so it's the Monday. I guess it would be the Monday before the election.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bellnet.
Hey, Justin, thank you. Um, there's a whole lot of responsibility that falls on on your department's shoulders. I mean, probably for literally life and death. Um, and so my question, um, you report the uh, the birth records and the death records, and as I was just kind of thumbing through this, I thought about it, like, now, does that mean people who are literally born and died in Ottawa County, but perhaps their residency might be in Muskegon or Kent or Aligan?
That's a great question.
And then how does this interact with census, or is that an entirely different process?
Yeah, those are really good questions. The the death and birth does, is limited specifically to the people who are born here. So, you know, we have three birthing hospitals in Ottawa County, Holland, Zeeland, and Grand Haven, and so people are coming in sometimes, particularly in Aligan County, like the closest hospital for a lot of folks is Holland Hospital. So a lot of our residents, um, a lot of our residents utilize those hospitals, but it's not all people who live here, right? Uh, and the same thing with with death records as well. So if you pass away anywhere within the boundary of Ottawa County, that death record gets sent through the medical examiner in public health to our office. Oh, and then the um, the other question was on the census data. So my understanding is that census data pulls from M D H H S, which is the state registrar, essentially where we are required to send all of those records up to. So we don't have any direct relationship with the Census Bureau on it, but they're definitely getting that data. Yeah.
Right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Appreciate it.
Guys, appreciate it. You bet.
All right. Uh, we will move on to ten B, the West Michigan Enforcement Team Twenty Twenty Three Annual Report.
Good morning.
Morning. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Andy Foster. I'm a lieutenant with the state police. Uh, I do oversee our West Michigan Enforcement Team here in Ottawa County. I uh, I don't know, I had some documents for you. I don't know if they're going to come up on the screen. Wanted to give you some pictures too, to put some things in perspective. But for those that don't know, uh, we have two, I guess, West Michigan Enforcement Team, one in Muskegon County, one here in Ottawa County. Again, a multi-jurisdictional team made up of uh, Ottawa County Sheriff's Department, uh, the Holland Police Department and the Michigan State Police, where our goal is not only, uh, do we help investigate violent crime, but also drug trafficking and drug traffickers into our area here. Waiting for that. Just a few things I want to point out, um, and then I'll take questions for you. I did provide a lot of information in that packet, just uh, about arrest numbers, seizure numbers. Um, I think the three uh, main, I guess, threats that we face here with our team in Ottawa County, and much like the state of Michigan, there's three main drugs, crystal methamphetamine, uh, fentanyl and cocaine are our three top priorities that we face. Um, I will say, uh, especially for our team here in Ottawa and as well as Muskegon, we had a very substantial increase in crystal methamphetamine seizures this past year in twenty twenty-three, over thirty two thousand grams of crystal methamphetamine, um, as well as over fifteen hundred grams of straight fentanyl, uh, too, within our area. I'm moving on to um, some case highlights for you. Um, I just wanted to bring up some pictures towards the end. Whoever's scrolling for me, thank you. Oh, right. Go back. So in the past, I've kind of talked about cases, uh, long narratives that a lot of people probably don't read or have the time to read, so I wanted to bring some pictures in, put some things in perspective. So these first three pages, that's actually a kind of a close-up of crystal methamphetamine that we seize here in the county. Um, one of the pictures before kind of shows the size uh, of those uh, pieces of crystal meth, one about four inches. Um, this was a case where there was a parole abscondor who was actually absconding from a prior We Met case. Uh, detectives did a great job locating the person, um, and conducted a search warrant on the residence here in Ottawa County. Additional three hundred and ten grams of crystal methamphetamine were located um, in the residence. Uh, one thing that was pointed out to me by the DEA, in fact, was just the size of these uh, crystals, was that that's, that can be directly related to cartel um, drugs, when you have bigger crystal shards, as they call them. So obviously, we're making a pretty big impact when we're taking out that type of quantity, as well as that type of, I guess, crystal methamphetamine. But that was just here in twenty twenty-three. Couple more pictures for you of that same case. Um, this one here is just, again, another close-up of crystal methamphetamine. Um, this was actually, we have detectives that work in all kinds of capacities, undercover capacities, um, that actually purchased this um, crystal methamphetamine here um, on a different case, um, just because of the prevalence of it that we were facing this past year. It's about two ounces of crystal methamphetamine, and the device next to it there, I I I might have talked about in the past, but never had any pictures. That's called the Truenarc uh, testing device. It's something not only does our team have, but I know the Sheriff's Department has, but uh, our scientific labs use these for pre-testing, if you will. It's very reliable in terms of being able to test, uh, as all, as well as keep our detectives safe from actually handling the actual substances. Um, so it's been a great tool we've had over this last several years. Um, a lot of the teams, multi-jurisdictional teams in the state have them. A lot of departments are starting to get them. They are expensive, but definitely um, have been very beneficial to us. They're portable. We can take them to scenes, take them out to scenes, uh, traffic stops for detectives and even the road patrol. So just wanted to point that out for you. Uh, the next picture there, um, uh, we do come across firearms. This is actually, an undercover officer actually purchased this firearm off the street for about five hundred dollars. Um, so between our two counties, um, we deal a lot with firearms as well. Unfortunately, they kind of go hand in hand sometimes with drug trafficking. Um, but that was uh, an undercover officer purchasing that. Um, next picture, uh, this was a a good case too. Ottawa County Sheriff's Department made a traffic stop on a vehicle on on ninety-six. Um, and a lot of times, we have a great working relationship, so they'll call in We Met detectives, which came in to help assist and kind of oversee this case here, because that's that's twenty-one baggies of crack cocaine that were located in that vehicle, roughly about ninety one grams, um, case back uh, mid, mid twenty twenty-three. So, um, next picture for you. So this was a pretty large case with our We Met Ottawa team working along with the DEA. One of our detectives, again, worked in a U C capacity, and that's about a half a pound of crystal methamphetamine um, back in twenty twenty-three that he purchased from a suspect. Um, we do, some of our cases do branch out to kind of the Grand Rapids, Kent County area, but um, this was a kind of a case that turned federal. And the next picture too, I can show you, that's a close-up of fentanyl. That's about thirty-one grams of fentanyl that was seized or purchased during that that deal as well. Um, unfortunately, we do see a lot of straight fentanyl between Muskegon and a, and some here in Ottawa County, but that was part of that operation too. Um, I think the next picture might be a close-up, close-up for you. Again, there's that straight fentanyl um, that we're facing out there. Uh, the next picture, um, it's not strawberry milk. Wish it was. That's pretty good stuff, but we saw a lot of these containers last year. They actually was, uh, they're being used. I mean, it's been used for years, but we came across a few more this past year, but inside it, it's kind of a hidden compartment. It had about an ounce of crack, I believe. In the next couple pictures, you'll see um, detectives uncovered about an ounce of crack. Um, there's some, I think cocaine in that one, um, based on an operation, yeah, right there. All that was shoved in that, in that bottle there. We've had Pringle containers, even water bottles, believe it or not. Um, kind of made a little bit of a comeback, but it's something I saw years ago, um, when I was out on the road with these folks. But um, another picture for you. Again, firearms, seize these, and again, you can see kind of the extended magazine with this, with this firearm here. Um, again, detectives uh, were able to kind of coordinate this subject coming into the Holland area with this firearm. And then the last case, just to put some things in perspective for you. This was a joint case between our Muskegon team and our Ottawa team uh, back in March of twenty three. It actually originated with Muskegon P D, but uh, it turned into a, a large case where both teams were needed to serve search warrants um, on different facilities, storage units, residences. So in the next few pages, you'll see there were several firearms, thousands of pills, um, amphetamine pills, methamphetamine pills, um, crystal meth, some heroin even, um, and and firearms again. But yeah, there's just some close-up views of those. And uh, it was a great case uh, for those detectives that put it together. I don't necessarily always get to help with the cases, detectives that aren't here, that do all the great work from all the different departments and the support we've had. So, um, I didn't want to bore you with any of the other statistics in there. Um, feel free to ask any questions if you'd like, or definitely can look at those um, at your leisure if you'd like to.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions? Commissioner Cosby and Commissioner
Thank you, Officer Foster, for this presentation. I think what I've been reading is the potency of these med- well, um, drugs has increased significantly in putting at risk our officers and dogs. Is that correct, K-Nice?
Well, yeah, I believe the potency is definitely stronger. Um, our labs don't necessarily test for the potency of of these drugs, but we know if we're dealing with straight fentanyl or cocaine, that it definitely is a dangerous uh, substance where we have to take our precautions. You know, we use our personal protective gear, gloves, masks if needed, goggles. But yeah, it could cause, if some inhalation or ingestion is definitely going to be cause for concern if it were to come in contact with a person or or a dog, for sure.
So the machine that we saw here that you bring on site with you doesn't test potency or?
No, it will just tell us, right, but we don't have to handle it. It can be within that plastic bag, which is uh, again, a little safer for us. So if it, if we zap and say it's fentanyl or cocaine, then we know kind of what we're dealing with and what we need to do to maybe package it differently or handle it differently.
Well, thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Bellnet.
Hi, uh, just a quick question. Um, you mentioned the the safety of the officers that are dealing with this. Um, years ago, we were a part of a group that was doing adopt a highway training, and I didn't know if there was any kind of pamphlet or something, like on Earth Day or Adopt a Highway, when volunteers are out, you know, along the roadways, you know, they come across perhaps some of this stuff. Um, any, I didn't know if there was any kind of recommendation.
Look into that. Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know, but I can look into that. I know years ago, when we saw the meth labs were a kind of a big deal in the early two thousands, there was always those pamphlets about if you saw two-liter bottles with duct tape, don't touch them, don't handle them, but I can look into that for you to see. That'd be a pretty good idea.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kleidens.
Thanks for the report, Lieutenant. Uh, you had mentioned that um, that uh, the shards, uh, the size of the shards indicated more cartel activity than, um, does that mean that, like, the interdiction efforts to kind of like, close local cooking operations have been really successful, and it's coming in from out of the area now?
Yeah, the the local operations are definitely down in terms of making it or producing it, because it's not very cost-effective, but a lot of it is just being imported from uh, across the border, United States border, and trafficked into the area, because it's cheaper for the dealers to get and less risk in terms of actually cooking it and making it. But yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Bonnema.
Yeah, when you, when you say across the border, are you referring to our northern border or southern border?
Typically, the southern border.
Southern border?
Correct.
Are you seeing it come over water at all?
Uh, according to the DEA, so Uh, according to the DEA, so the fentanyl and the fentanyl precursors that make it come from out of country, trafficked into the southern border and then up into the United States.
Right, anyone else? Commissioner Curran.
What countries are producing this to send across our border?
Fentanyl is China.
China.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rodi.
I just want to thank you for your work and um, for the risks that you and your team take. And also just appreciate the fact that, you know, not only are you cleaning up, you know, things from the criminals, but just for the ways that that protects parents and families who slip into drug use. And um, so I just appreciate your work.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move to ten C, uh, Ottawa County Facilities Maintenance, twenty-two-three Annual Report. Uh, welcome Cameron.
Good morning, well, no, good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Yeah, right on the dot. Uh, for those of you I haven't met yet, my name's Cameron, I'm the new director of facilities here for Ottawa County. Um, I got a little presentation here for uh, twenty-two-three Annual Report. Um, so let's see, a little bit about us, so um, twenty-two, twenty-three, there was a restructuring done within the department. Um, so this is post reorganization. Nation, uh, there were a handful of um, uh, positions were added to there, some of the office staff. Um, the new structuring that was done was good, in my opinion, um, and well needed. So uh, organization. A couple of the beautiful faces here that you'll see walking around all the facilities. Okay, a little bit about us, that was our uh, twenty-two-three operating budget, uh, just over three million dollars. And then what we actually spent was just over three million dollars, so had about a fifty thousand dollar surplus. Uh, that's pretty good, that's coming in, I mean, pretty close. Um, yeah, we have staff of twenty employees, a maintenance staff, custodial staff, um, project and compliance and administrative support. And then you can see down there on the bottom right, after the uh, rego organization, the four new positions that were created, assistant director, project assistant, operations coordinator and lead asset technician. So work orders and assets, this is as far as I'm concerned, the, the bread and butter of this facilities department. Um, so it's split up into two, two categories, reactive maintenance and preventative maintenance. Um, reactive maintenance is if you have, you know, they know down there really replacing light bulbs. Um, someone notices a, you know, a toilet's leaky or the faucet's leaky, then that's something we have to go take care of right away. Um, and then preventative maintenance are the things you can do to prevent reactive maintenance um, work orders. So uh, just over five thousand work orders in uh, in twenty-two-three. Um, that's, that's a lot. Um, I think that would like comes out to like twenty a day or something like that. Um, so we're, we are busy in the facilities department, that's, that's for sure. Um, so some of the examples of the assets that we maintain, uh, vehicles, irrigation systems, HVAC equipment, um, hardscapes, which are your, your parking lots and your sidewalks and those sort of things, uh, system furnitures. Uh, cost of service delivery, so this is a interesting way of looking at our department. Um, breaks it down with the operating budget and then the uh, our total square feet. So um, total square foot manage that six hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-six. Um, that's for twenty-two-three, that will be more with Family Justice Center next year, keep that in mind. Um, so uh, almost five dollars per square foot, that's, that's pretty good. Um, square feet are, it's sort of a hard thing to visualize sometimes, but the average home in Michigan is just a thousand square feet or so. Um, and we've got, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand that we're dealing with, so we have a lot, a lot of square foot to maintain. Um, and then uh, cost per work order, so um, with just the fifty-two-hundred work orders and then our operating budget are about six hundred dollars per work order. Um, that's uh, that will change, you know, going uh, going forward a little bit here. So some of the contracts that facilities manages, um, there are things that we do in-house and then contracts that uh, we outsource. So some of those examples, snow removal, um, uh, some of these, actually most of these are done by uh, companies that require a certain license to be able to do perform. So boiler maintenance, you need a state boiler license in order to do your CSD one state boiler inspections. Um, the fire suppression stuff, some of the HVAC control stuff are sort of a specialized uh, process. And then our buildings, so I'm, I'm going to breeze through these because there's a lot of information, so stop me if you have any questions. Um, fifteen buildings, like I said, that will be sixteen next year when I'm doing this. Um, twenty-one acres of parking lots and sixty-five acres of grounds that we maintain. So the James Street complex, um, four buildings there that we uh, we deal with, hundred and thirty-eight thousand square feet total, in total. Um, A building, we have uh, did some new, could you move the, the light from there, Jordan? Please, thank you. Um, twenty-two-three projects, uh, new roof and safety equipment, so that's uh, the safety equipment is a, is a big one here. Um, office renovations, a new generator, and then uh, this year we are doing some ADA updates, that's a continual update through countywide and then some cooling towers as well. B building, uh, B building got a facelift, so if you can go uh, you know, drive by the building down there uh, in Holland, it looks really good. So re-clad exterior windows and doors and some uh, cubicle updates. And then this year we are continuing ADA compliance updates and some cooling towers. That's not a typo, the A and B building are getting the same thing. So C building, built in nineteen eighty-seven, twenty thousand square feet. Um, twenty-two-three outdoor lighting upgrades and then generator and LED light upgrades. That uh, the LED lights went on to the uh, the uh, the circuit that the generator hooks up to, so we can have more lights on in the event of a power outage. And then this year we are continuing the ADA upgrades. D building, um, we had some roof resurfacing done there, no, nothing crazy. Um, this year we were doing some safety ladders and some exterior paint, nothing really too insane here, feel more complex. So um, this is by far the, the complex with the, the, the most, the most attention. Um, mainly because of the jail, but um, the administration building. So this, this one is one of the larger facilities here. Um, twenty-two-three, we had a conference room G, um, replace some carpet at the lower level and a fire alarm panel as well, replace that. Um, this year we are servicing the window for uh, the elections department and the uh, sheriff's record area remodel, which is getting underway and then seaweed pavement, which is in the works. So, and then a little, little sneak peek, Family Justice Center, no, it wasn't twenty-three, but it's a topic of discussion. Um, so that July twenty-third here in a couple of weeks, that's, we're still, we're still on that timeframe and everything is looking good to get open then, so. Um, justice facility, uh, this is the largest of the facilities, hundred and thirty-six thousand square feet. Um, last year we had uh, uh, conference room updates, new juvenile uh, recreation yard gate and booking floor and shower. Uh, going forward, we have uh, some food passes, carpet, um, minor renovations for juvenile classrooms. Um, new pavement behind the jail and then the uh, some interior, interior door scanners. Uh, Grand Haven facilities, so there's three facilities in Grand Haven, uh, one of which we don't own, we rent, um, or in a lease. So there's, I'll get to that here in a second, but uh, the Grand Haven courthouse built in two thousand nine, nothing crazy going on here. Um, a little bit of new carpet, uh, boiler stack replacement and a new doorway on the third floor. Uh, this year we're looking to redo the parking lots pavement, um, the generator motor replacement, it's already been done. Um, and some ADA elevator repairs that we're working on currently. So uh, Fulton Street building, uh, I believe this is our, the oldest building that uh, we manage. Um, roof you're servicing with some safety rails, exterior roof ladders. Um, this year we're doing some uh, marquee signs. Um, relocate a, a drinky fountain that's in a weird area and retaining wall, uh, safety railing. So, and then Beach Tree, this is the, the facility we don't own. Um, so we, we really don't, don't do much with it. Uh, public health occupies it, it's only twenty-two hundred square feet. Um, we installed a generator last year uh, for them and then this year we're doing the uh, card reader installations on their doors. So a couple of other buildings here, Hudsonville District Court. Last year we did some roof and uh, HVAC updates and then installed a generator for public health. Uh, and then this year we're doing some bathroom renovations and in that are some ADA uh, up, updates as well. And then Holland District Court, um, installation of a water remediation equipment, we're having some water problems there that is uh, taken care of. Um, replace the fire alarm panel there as well. This year we're doing some rooftop units, HVAC units, um, exterior window washing, which from what I hear desperately needs to be done. And uh, card reader installation there as well. So going into twenty-two-five, um, I'm looking forward to it, that's for sure. Um, we have some exterior and interior signage updates countywide, so be looking for that. Um, HVAC upgrades at various buildings and then continuing to update compliance measures and um, align the department with industry best practices. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know that was a, a lot of information in a short amount of time, but um, feel free to ask questions if you have any.
Any questions? Commissioner Zalstra.
Thanks, hey Cameron, how you doing?
Hey, excellent, how are you?
I, I don't see the slide in our packet, but you talked about the average square foot was like four or something per square foot, as long as you're.
Forty-nine per square feet, yeah.
Which of the buildings is kind of like more expensive or more?
Yeah.
Trouble some as far as which drives the number, which one drives it down, I mean, obviously it's an average, right?
Yep, that's a great question, so um, it's, it, we, we don't exactly know quite yet, so uh, in twenty-two-three, one thing that uh, happened in the facilities department was a change in the asset management software. Um, so it went from one that was just not, not great. Um, to one that we're, we're still polishing right now, so that, that's data that we don't quite have yet, but it will be in the future. I plan on making a point of, you know, noting the squeaky wheels, if you like.
So we don't really have an idea like which buildings are driving our costs versus not, you know?
No, and that's, that's something I could, yeah, I, I could get that for you if you want, uh, going forward and just sort of shoot you an email on.
Okay, and I guess the second question, where do you think that the justice center is going to fall on that scale? I mean, do you anticipate it being one of the, you know, above that average or below that average?
No, I, I would imagine it's going to be below for quite a while. Um, so it's, it's a new facility, all, all the equipment's new. Um, you know, we're, we're getting uh, you know, people hired on to get them up to speed on that building. Um, there, there really shouldn't be anything, anything major come up in that building for quite a while.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Commissioner Miedema.
Welcome to the county, Cameron.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, do you have an idea what types of changes are going to happen with the ADA standards across the, the different buildings? Like what type of work?
Um.
Or not yet?
Not quite yet, yeah, so that, that's something that we're figuring out. Um, John Vargo, our compliance guy is, he's on it. Um, so no, I don't have the answer off the top of my head, I can uh, I can check with him and let you know if you like.
Commissioner Cosby.
Welcome Cameron.
Thank you.
So um, question for you, I'm a peer of the CMH board, so I'm going to ask a couple CMH related questions.
Okay.
Parking lot stripes.
Yes.
Have you heard about that?
Yes, I have, I've heard a lot about parking lot stripes. Um, so what we're doing right now is there are, um, like I mentioned, a, a few parking lots that are going to be replaced, redone. Um, so in order to get a good list of the lots that need to be done, we're doing core sampling. So uh, core sampling will be done countywide. Um, put a priority list together of the parking lots that need to be redone. The parking lots that don't get redone this year will be restripped. So I don't want to re-stripe everything and then tear all that up and then pave it and re-stripe it again. Right, so um, but yeah, the, the lots that uh, like James Street, um, if that doesn't get redone, it will be re-stripped.
Wonderful, good news. And so I'm looking for real estate for CMH as well.
Okay.
Wondering, so building B, we have the Juvenile Justice Institute there. Are they planning on moving? Do you know if we have any available?
I, I don't, so that's, that's another.
Here to the Family Justice Center is what I was wondering if they were moving.
Right, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure off the top of my head. Um, finding space for everybody is uh, that's, it's a whole, it's a whole project right now, we have people pooping, moving around. Um, but off, off the top of my head, I'm not, I'm sure of that.
Yeah, I've made a request for a building usage assessment since I've been here, so.
Okay.
Just so we can look into some of these um, kind of real estate needs and efficiencies and I really appreciate your price per square foot.
Yeah.
Or cost to make.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Commissioner Rodi.
Well, I guess I just have a follow-up then to that, um, because you're right, Commissioner Cosby, you have been asking for that for a while. So I don't know if that was on your radar yet or um, it, I guess I'm just wondering if, will you be able to do that and how long do you think something like that might take?
Yeah, good question, so it, it is on my radar. Um, I'm still getting up to speed on most things. Um, but uh, yeah, as far as the timeframe goes, uh, we want to get everyone moved into the Family Justice Center. That's a gross undertaking of just moving people. Um, once everyone's in the Family Justice Center and sorted, then we can sort of do a broad spectrum. Where do we have room, who needs it the most and then act accordingly on that.
Okay, that sounds great.
Hmm.
I do think we talked about using a third-party vendor potentially for that as well, so it wouldn't necessarily be something that's on your shoulders.
Right.
And we'd have to look to Karen about whether or not there were some monies that were actually budgeted for that last year too.
I've, I've, I've heard a little bit about that.
Yeah, good, good, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Kleidens.
Um, looking at the James Street complex, uh, do you anticipate, uh, because they're putting in a massive um, complex to the north of the complex, do you, and I'm just looking at the retention pond, do you anticipate that having any impact on how this site, um, I, I mean, how you're going to work during construction because it's going to be a while, but any impacts that that could have? I'm not going to say downstream because I don't know which way the stream goes there, but um, any sort of environmental impacts from that? Because that's going to be a, they're going to move a lot of dirt there.
Yeah, I, 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 I would say no, um, just, just from what I know so far. Um, I am not, I'm not aware of any um, major environmental impacts that that would have uh, going forward. Um, but that's something I can, I can check in and, and let, let you know if that is the case, if you like.
Cool, thanks.
Yeah.
Anything else, Commissioner Bonnab?
Yeah, Cameron, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, a lot of us don't know much about you, so would you just take a minute to share a little bit of your background and where you came from and?
Absolutely.
What brought you here?
Okay, uh, well, my name's Cameron. Um, so I uh, I've been living in the county most of my life, I have a decade of work experience. Uh, my background is uh, heating, cooling, refrigeration, that aspect. Um, I've done tons of work in that field, uh, managing teams and projects and of all different sizes, um, management, that sort of deal. So um, you know, I live, live in Grand Haven with my family, I'm actually expecting a uh, a, a son any day now, um, or do. So if you see me bolt out of here one day, that's why. Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm very excited to be here, um, like Justin was talking about earlier, there's um, what really motivates me right now is um, there, the public doesn't have options on some of the uh, um, some of the things that the uh, the county offers and I want to do my part to make that the, the best experience that we can for the public. Um, so if that is uh, you know, having clean facilities for people to walk into and get their passport photos taken, right? Um, so not only for the public, but then for the employees here, um, you know, people work well when it's a nice air-conditioned environment in the summer, they get a little grumpy when it's warmer, right? And we, we, we try and keep up on these sort of things for uh, for everyone, just to have a good, excellent experience. And, and I've always said that um, we, when we're doing our jobs properly, you don't even know we exist, right? You, you don't see us, you don't hear from us, everything just works and you're comfortable, so. Yeah.
Yeah, anybody else? Uh, alright, I just got uh, three quick things, number one, congrats on a upcoming birth, that's great.
Thank you very much.
Uh, it was really great to meet last week.
Yeah.
Um, and my, my other just quick comment is thank you for working on the card readers. I think the transition has gone really well so far and uh, it worked great. So I'm glad to see that continuing and continuing in other buildings.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, uh, that brings us to item eleven, public comment. Is there? Hello, anyone who would like to address the board?
My name's Dave Barnoski and I vote in Port Sheldon Township. I'd like to know why there was no public announcement of a major or of a department head being hired. I asked John Anderson about it. And I asked him if he would make a, you know, put it in the newsletter. He wrote me an email back saying I would have to FOIA the information of the internal email. Why would I have to do that? If your new facilities manager, can you, if he's of what you would expect, why would I have to FOIA his, you know, the announcement of him being, the internal email of him being announced to the other employees? Can you not defend his resume? Would it be because he's so closely related to so many recent Republican candidates? Is this another one of your famous quick hires that will not pan out?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Is there anyone online today? We do have one more in person.
I am Heather Kors. I vote in South Holland. Disappointed again. You're reading commandments that you don't even follow. You talk a big game, but you're not doing it. You took out the DEI office. You talk about freedom of speech and you take it away from forums yourself. You preach about loving God and stolen elections. I mean, my God, really? Stolen elections? They're not free and fair? They've always been. I'm 48 years old. I've never had a problem. I'm just so emphatically disappointed with Ottawa impact. I was driving down Lake Shore the other day. Came across this glorious sign. If you're against Ottawa impact, did you know you hate children? If you don't agree with them, did you know that you hate children? That's what they're telling you on a sign on Lake Shore Drive. I must hate my two so much. Both went to college, both successful people. I must hate them because I don't agree with you. Y'all are fascists. Fascists. And you will be voted out. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Jen Greenlee from Park Township again. I want you to know, I was a poll challenger in the 2020 election. And Justin, I'm not sure if you know this or not, but the previous Ottawa County GOP person did know, the female one. I was kicked out. I was kicked out as a poll challenger because I wasn't being allowed to do my job. I wasn't allowed to watch the tallying of the votes at the end, as I had been in previous times. I did not get to see the true numbers of how the votes fell out. Is that going to happen again? I also heard that a poll challenger was prevented from being at the complex here when it was the Lucy Evil voting that was being counted. I don't know if it's true or not, but if poll challengers are being kicked out, why should there even be anybody doing anything about challenging polls and wanting to monitor it if they're going to be kicked out? I didn't appreciate being kicked out and I didn't have any say about it. I had to leave. Now, along with that, I want to say, how do we know in terms of absentee ballots? Because now we have more time to have absentee ballots provided ahead of time. How do we know if the absentee ballots are going to actually equal the number of actual absentee voters that are fully formally applied? I question that. My other question is some places it does not allow the use of cell phones. I'm the kind that will come in with my little scratch paper to write down stuff about people. That was in my more ignorant days. I think I'm a little less ignorant now because I can, I'm more informed and I show up. But we really should allow the use of cell phones and not have them be banned from any polling place because there are signs that say, no cell phones allowed. Well, some people don't use hard copy paper anymore. Why can't we use our phones? What can be done to allow that? I'm not coming in with my chicken scratch paper anymore, but I'd like to use my phone for things that I'm not sure about or might not remember. But here locally, I think I know quite a bit nowadays.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Hi again, Kurt Maplink. I vote in Zealand Township. And I just want to continue a little bit. Ottawa County residents, just ask yourself why there's such a division. Ask yourself why the old board is working so hard to get one group of people out. Ask yourself why the Democratic Party nationally is involved here. I'd like to welcome our esteemed guest from CBS, Washington DC. Ask yourself why people from Washington DC are interested in your county. Don't be embarrassed by it. Look into it. Do your homework. I get asked a lot by people who want to know things going on in the county. They want to know who to vote for. Do your homework. Get involved. Show up at a meeting. A lot of people are working today at this timeframe. They have a nightly meeting. Ask yourself why people don't want to let people talk. Three minutes. Everyone I'm looking at right here is a servant of this county. You're a servant of mine. You work for me. You work for this county. You're not going to please everyone. You're going to try to please the mass. You're going to try to make good common sense. Look at the verbiage these people talk about, good governance. Look it up. Look at where it came from. Ottawa County residents, conservatives, you have to beat the Democrats, the Republican in name only. You got to beat the media because they're feeding you a bunch of garbage. Try to find some real stuff once. Have these people write something that's truthful. Look at all the hit pieces that are done. Doesn't make sense. We have to beat a corrupt voting system. How does that happen? Why are they here to, to talk about that or to film it, to talk to people about it? What happens at the national level happens in your county. And it's going crazy in your county. So conservatives of Ottawa County, do a favor. Show up on voting day. Vote. Mail-in ballots are a great way for some people to see how many votes they need to get. Show up on voting day. Vote in person. Have a great day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Dan Zimmer, Port Sheldon Township. Ottawa County residents, become aware and become educated on Project 2025. What's being proposed at the national level? Become aware of the threat, domestic threat of white supremacy, of white Christian nationalism. Ottawa County residents, remember January 6, the riots, the death toll, the carnage. Democracy is at stake. Concern yourself. There are lessons to be learned from history. What occurred in Nazi Germany confounded the world. How could this happen? Ottawa County, bear witness, it is happening before your very eyes. Engage yourself. Steak your moral compass.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person who would like to address the board? Is there anyone online?
You have five online public comments at this point, Mr. Chair.
All right, great.
First is Lori. Lori, if you can unmute yourself. And you have three minutes if you state your name and jurisdiction.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Lori Grassman Robinson Township. I have thanked the Commission before for closing the DEI department, not only for saving taxpayer funds, but also for stopping programs that require race, ethnicity, sex, and orientation to be used as primary criteria for positions. Ottawa County has watched how DEI fails in real time over the past couple of months. Quote, "By virtue of a lot of factors, both genetic and historical, I sit better as a candidate. I'm older, I'm white, I'm a guy. My family has been in the area since 1848. I'm a veteran. I check off so many right wing boxes." These are the words from Commissioner Chris Clinjens, and they are extremely racist. Mr. Clinjens probably has more DEI trainings under his belt than anyone sitting in that room. And these are the words he felt comfortable to say, leaked to the public, and stand by today. Not only are they extremely derogatory and racist, they are wrong. Ottawa County doesn't elect only old white men anymore. District One elected Frank Garcia, a Hispanic male, multiple times. District Two elected Lucy Evil, a Hispanic female, in 2022. In 2022, the Commission went from old men to the most diverse board it's ever had. Interesting though, those that ooze DEI are trying to bring back old white men. The racism is vile and hypocrisy is deafening.
Thank you.
The next is Rebecca Patrick. Rebecca, if you could just state your jurisdiction and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rebecca Patrick, Allendale Township. I wanted to speak briefly to you this morning about the recycling center comments that I heard during the discussion today. And the reason that I want to bring it up is because I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that we're dealing with a million-dollar grant here from the state of Michigan that will allow us to meet state law and to meet state requirements concerning recycling. A million dollars is a lot of money. And I think that we need to do our due diligence to move forward with this as expeditiously and as and with due diligence as possible. And I think part of the confusion around this, I heard, I think Commissioner Moss tell us that this grant was never intended or approved to be used in Allendale. It was approved to be used in Ottawa County. But I think there's confusion around this matter because of the wording that was in the packet that around the motion that you folks approved back in June of 23. And so I'm going to read it to you. It says, "The suggested motion was to approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners a $1 million grant from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. And the summary of the request was Ottawa County's Environmental Sustainability Program is developing a new environmental sustainability center that will assist in serving an area that currently doesn't have easy access to services we currently provide, as well as a location to grow educational and other sustainability programs that the county may need. The new center would be located in Allendale Charter Township in partnership with Grand Valley State University, one of the county's largest growing populations." And then it goes on to explain more about why that location is desirable. So I think that any reasonable person reading that, attending that meeting, hearing what was said, would conclude that the recycling center was going to be developed in Allendale. Now, things may need to change. Other realities may pop up that requires staff and/or the Commission to make a different decision. But that brings me to my second part of my comment, which is regarding Ms. Roddy's statements about the fact that there were discussions that were had. It sounded like what she said. There were discussions that were had that illustrated why this recycling center could not be constructed in Allendale. And that there were videos available of such discussions. I'm not aware of those discussions. In fact, today, the discussion that you had today and the information that came forward was the first that I'd heard about why that recycling center may not have been built in Allendale. I'm glad to hear that it's still under consideration. But until today, I was not aware of any of those details. So I guess what I'd like to summarize and conclude by saying is that I really do hope that the board makes every expeditious effort to get this ball rolling because $1 million grant.
Thank you.
Next public comment is Kristen Megan Kelly. Kristen, if you could just unmute yourself, state your jurisdiction. You have three minutes.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I am Kristen Megan Kelly from Jamestown Township, and I want to address a significant issue concerning the upcoming election on August 6. I received a mailer laced with falsehoods regarding the financial actions of our current Board of Commissioners, which is being widely disseminated. These lies are propagated by specific PACs that have endorsed and financially supported three Commissioners. Kleynions, Bonama, Zalstra, and let's not forget Bergman's preferred replacement candidate. One of the most egregious claims being circulated is the new Ottawa Impact endorsed Commissioners have increased spending by $42 million since 2022. This statement is not only misleading but factually incorrect. The new Commissioners whom these PACs target were not even in office in 2022. The previously slated Commissioners spent $33 million of that alleged $42 million increase, tomb of who still continue to serve on this current board. This misinformation campaign appears to be a deliberate attempt to confuse and scare voters or display an outright incompetence. These falsehoods are defamatory, and we must hold our elected officials accountable and those aspiring to office to the high standard of truth and integrity. The four Commissioners affiliated with these misleading PACs have been silent. Kleynions, Bonama, Zalstra, and Bergman, I have not had at all come, heard come forward to clarify their positions or disavow these false claims. And the lack of response further erodes public trust and raises questions about their commitment to transparency and accountability. As my dear friend, former State Senator Pat Colbeck says, "Bad company corrupts good character." In contrast, the Ottawa Impact mailers provide backed fact versus media booklets. And that booklet offers evidence-based fact-checking to counter their purposeful disinformation campaigns that are being funneled by the Democratic Party and anti-liberty republicans. Such efforts to provide clear factual information are essential in maintaining the integrity of our elections and ensuring that voters can make informed decisions based on truth rather than fear mongering and deceit. I urge all voters to scrutinize the information presented to them critically, regardless of party or faction. We must reject the spread of falsehoods and demand honesty from those who represent us, excuse me, seek to represent us, and the future of this county depends on our ability to discern fact from fiction and hold our leadles accountable for their actions and words. And I'd also like to add, hearing my husband be called a potential puppet or pawn for the Commissioners. During door knocking, actually, I've seen people bring that up, saying why they tried to hire an HVAC guy as their Health Director. And although I respected their final decision, when I actually bring along my husband's credentials and sometimes him with me, I can see the cognitive dissonance in their face dissolve and they get angry and they actually ask me and Nate why he hasn't sued for defamation. And he just says, you know, this is politics. If I'm ever called again, I'll be ready. But he still maintains employment and I just want to remind people that my husband exceeded the credentials at the state level. So calling him a pawn and puppet is not only very unethical and rude and defamatory, but you don't understand the oath that he holds as a veteran and the integrity that he holds. So Commissioners affiliated with Ottawa.
Next public comment is Sheila Detloff. Sheila, if you want to unmute yourself and state your jurisdiction, you have three minutes.
Hello, Sheila Detloff, Holland Township. So based on the first set of public comments, I can see that the spin machine is already in full centrifugal force in preparation for August 6. I found it interesting that Joel Studabaker wants the Ottawa County GOP, which I think he called a private entity or something similar, to choose all of the countywide elected officials for us rather than letting to choose all of the countywide elected officials for us rather than letting the people decide. That would be the situation, since there are no Democratic candidates for any of the countywide offices other than for Water Resources Commissioner. And for that matter, only one Commissioner district has a contested Democratic primary. But as Gretchen Cosby just said during Clerk Robuck's report, "Every legal citizen of the United States should be able to vote," and I agree 100% with that. I realize that politicking can get complicated, but I'm here to tell you that if Michigan had closed primaries and if people were required to be registered in a party to vote in a primary, neither of which is true, by the way, then I absolutely would be a registered Republican because as a legal citizen of the United States, I should be able to vote. And in a county like Ottawa, which for now at least is red, the only way to have a voice in many elections is to vote on the Republican side in the primaries. I'm not willing to give up my right to vote, even if Joel tells me that the Ottawa County GOP knows best and I should let them make my decisions for me. So if we did have closed primaries, I think the situation would be no different in a county like Ottawa than it is right now. My recommendation, if you really want to win elections, is to get out there and do the work. Your supporters could be out knocking on doors, phone banking, texting, doing a lot of things to help you win instead of already finding excuses for if you don't. Finally, I just want to thank Clerk Robuck for his unending patience in explaining how our elections work and for his diligence in ensuring free and fair elections in Ottawa County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public comment is Joe Spalding. And Joe, if you would unmute yourself, state your jurisdiction. You have three minutes.
Howdy, my name is Joe Spalding and I am calling from my home in Holland Township. I wanted to take three minutes and talk about John Anderson, who is running for sheriff. And we'll start by talking about two of his supporters. One of them is sitting in the room with you right now. He's got a dark gray T-shirt on. He's sitting right in the middle. That is Aaron Compinger. He is a confessed child molester. He tried to have sex with an 11-year-old girl. And he is one of the most vocal supporters of John Anderson. Another supporter of John Anderson is Neil Frisky. And we haven't gotten to talk about this in public very much. But Neil Frisky is a GOP state rep, one who some people in the room have worked with. And Neil Frisky was arrested in Lansing a few days ago for chasing an exotic dancer with a gun. And the texts that have come out since then have shown that he was soliciting sex from this woman and there was some sort of payment issue. You know, the charges haven't been filed yet. These are still in theory allegations. But the 911 calls and the, not the 911 calls, but the police dispatch audio is available on this. And no one in Ottawa Impact, Joe, you, or Kendra, who complains about dildos and Walmart, have talked about this horrible thing happening with someone you're photographed with, Joe. You and Aaron Compinger are with him, next to John Anderson, who's running for sheriff and who participated in one of the worst. He almost definitely did this, guys. If he was there and he got a promotion, he almost definitely participated in one of the worst cover-ups of one of the worst child molesting police officers in the history of California. And then he bolted over here. Don't California my Michigan and especially don't do it in that disgusting way. We need to support Eric DeBoer for sheriff. Thank you. And that's what happens when you bring in campaigning to public comment, Joe. Peace.
Thank you.
We have one more public comment. Olivia, and Olivia, Reed, if you could state your jurisdiction, you have three minutes.
Hi, it's actually Tracy Reed. Thank you, Justin. I'm in Grand Haven. I want to express my support so much for Ottawa Impact. You know, your perseverance, your integrity, your compassion and your courage. We see you. We are supporting you. We are waking up out here. I am running to be precinct delegate and I could not be happier about that. And I want you to know that, you know, we are here. So while there are many voices, don't give up. Keep fighting for us. It's important and I just want to say thank you very much. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you. Are there any more online public comments?
None at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right, are there any more public comments in the room? Anyone in person? We have one in the audience and then?
Aaron Jacob Pagnar, Jamestown Township. I just want to point out a lie about this being a democracy. This is a representative republic, period. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. We have at least one more in person?
Kendra Wenzel, Hudsonville. I just wanted to give a little clarity to what Mr. Spalding just accused me of, dildos in Walmart and complaining about that. They are connected literally to the children's hair accessories now in Walmart. They are literally like this. A father was there with his daughter, trying to take her away because she was asking questions about the sex toys. So if Joe Spalding has a problem with that, it just speaks volumes to me about his character and what he thinks is okay.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing as we have almost definitely reached the end of the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.